The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the -- we'll approve the agenda and get on with it, I want to clarify a couple of points. We're going to try to do something a little different tonight that will allow more people to address the council on items that we think are on your mind. Let me bear with me for a minute. Item number four on the agenda is an open forum. That's an opportunity for anybody to address the council on a topic not on the current -- on the agenda. That will -- I'll call that and offer that opportunity to anybody who wants to. Second, when you came in, there was a little sheet of paper. This is designed, if you want to speak about a topic on the agenda, you could fill it out. And normally, that's the process we follow. Tonight, we're going to -- I'm going to suggest we do something a little different. When we get to that item on the agenda, there's a public hearing dealing with the zoning for the Lake Towne project. That public hearing deals with the zoning, strictly speaking, with the zoning only. When we get to the public -- to the preliminary plat approval, in normal circumstance, you'd have to fill out one of these forms and you'd get only get five minutes. We're not going to restrict that people's opportunity to address the council. When we get to that topic, the first item on the agenda, Ben's going to lead it off with a presentation of where he thinks we are. I'll open it up, and anybody who wants to address the council on anything having to do with either the zoning or the preliminary plat will have that opportunity. So it's -- we're expanding the opportunity for residents to address the council when we get to that point. Forgive me, that's a little complicated, but hopefully, it's clear in everybody's mind and everybody who wants to. My presumption is that a lot of you are here to talk about or to listen to what's said about the preliminary plat. We hope to give you that opportunity. Of course, we'll do that when we get to it. So, having said that, let's adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mayor.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Move we approve the agenda as published.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've approved the agenda. Next is the open forum. If I haven't thoroughly confused you, anybody who wishes to address the council on anything item not on the current agenda, this is your opportunity. If you'd wish to address the council, please come forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say. Seeing none, there will be no open forum. We'll move to the visitors' presentation. Lori, you want to introduce?
Our first visitor this evening is Deb Barber. Deb was recently appointed to represent Victoria and the rest of the cities included in District Four of the Met Council. And she came by the office shortly after being appointed to meet some of the staff and had offered to come to a council meeting to meet all of you and to introduce yourself to the residents of Victoria. Thanks for being here, Deb.
Thank you so much for having me. And so, as you mentioned, my name is Deb Barber, and I'm the new Metropolitan Council Representative for District Four. District Four is the majority of Scott County, with the exception of the townships south of Prior Lake and most of Carver County, with the exception of the city of Chanhassen. So it's a very big district. One of the things I'm really trying to do as I take on this role is going out and meeting with local elected leaders and city officials and county officials, just to get familiarized with the district itself, but also to start building some relationships. A little bit about myself, I actually grew up in northern Minnesota. I'm an Iron Range kid from Ambaris. And I ended up going to college and grad school in Montana, where I got a master's degree in engineering mechanics. From there, I moved back to the Twin Cities in 1996 and settled in Shakopee in 2000 with my husband. There's where we still live there with raising our two kids. Also, what I do there is I co-own a medical device consulting company. What we do is help small -- anything from small startups to really big corporations develop their medical device products, get them through the regulatory processes, whether it's here or internationally, and eventually get them to the market. My role there is typically project management and strategic planning. So it's being able to look at the details, but also look at the big picture, which is a lot what Met Council does. Now, what got me to Met Council is really, just like many of you, I'm driven to public service. It's something that was very important to me. During my time in Shakopee, I got very involved. I've been served on boards at the school, city, and county level. At the school, it's as we are a rapidly growing city, there's been looking at how to restructure and reorganize our facilities and that type of thing. So I've been on a guiding coalition to help provide the school board with some direction from the community. For the city of Shakopee, I serve on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And for the county, I chaired the Health and Human Services Resource Council for five years, served on the Community Health Advisory Board, and also served on the Economic Development Group for scale, so the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency. So taking that background from the Met Council position opened up, which it opens up every time the governor, the new governor is elected, I decided to throw my hat in the ring. So went in and you apply, you go through a process, and if you become a finalist, then you interview in front of a nominating committee, which includes several former and currently current elected officials. The representative from our district was Mayor Janet Williams from Savage. And so, from there, they recommend your name up to the governor, and then you get appointed from there, then go through the Senate confirmation process, which is all done now. So I'm finally official, which is a couple of months into the job. It's kind of nice to know that that part is done. One of the things that I think is really important for me in this role is to have a continuing, ongoing dialogue with the communities in the district. Like I said, it's a big district. It's 15 cities and 17 townships. And right now, I'm trying to go out and meet with everybody as much as possible. I've met with representatives from many cities. You know, this morning, I was in Watertown. Tonight, I'm here. Last week, I was in Carver. Before that, I've been out to Waconia and Shakopee, Prior Lake, and Savage. I've met with officials of both counties. And I want to continue to do that. I want to make sure that you all know, not only am I interested, I want to be accessible. It's important for you to know that you can reach out to me, because all of you guys do know your cities better than I do. It's with the size of this district, you all will know of issues and concerns or activities going on in your community before I do. And as soon as we see something coming up, or you have questions, or you have, you know, even citizens or businesses having issues that you need to take up with or need contacts at council, sometimes you just need someone to make a phone call to, you know, break up a logjam. You know, that's part of my job. It's not only serving on the regional policy board, but you're also representing the district. And so, with that, that's what I really want to do, is make sure that you know that I do want to know, get to know you guys, build relationships with you, and then be able to be an advocate for you at council. Have any questions for me?
Council, questions for Deb? What's the best way to communicate with you?
Cell phone or email. So I do have a Met Council email. I think I gave all of you cards. You might have got one. I can grab one for you. But if you really need to get ahold of me in a hurry, cellphone could be because -- or even text sometimes to the cellphone, because if I'm in meetings, I can still answer. And especially if something, you know, we know how this goes. Sometimes it's something that can wait, but sometimes it's something that can't wait. And so, if you really need me urgently, send a text message. Otherwise, I'd say probably email is by far the best way.
How about from a policy point of view? What's keeping you up at night or occupying most of your time when you're not out touring 15 cities and 17 townships?
Honestly, right now, a lot of it is learning everything. It's -- I'm two months into the job, and there's a lot to learn. I do a lot of my focus right now on transportation. I serve on the transportation and management committees, and which I think is a very good thing for our district, to have a strong voice, especially on the transportation question. I look at at least a number of the cities, and suburban transit becomes a question of being able to connect suburbs versus, you know, I look at Shakopee, and we have workforce needs, but we can connect through express lines down to downtown Minneapolis. But how do we get, you know, east-west? We're here for you guys, it'd be north-south. And I think that's something that's going to become a bigger and bigger issue to move people around with changing demographics and aging populations. And how to do that and do that well in a cost-effective manner. And so, you know, I can see that being something that will definitely, probably take some of my thought in the near future.
And a little of attention.
Yeah, it needs some attention. And a spokesman.
Anybody else have a question? Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we have an issue that we want to, you know, work with the Met Council on, or, you know, something, do we send something to you, and then you kind of represent us and bring it to the whole group? Or do we send, you know, take on this issue and bring it, you know, all the way to just the council itself? I mean, how does the structure work? And how do you actually represent, you know, your district?
Sure. Some of that I'll say. I probably don't have complete answers for you yet, again, being kind of a newbie. Some things, like we have a sector rep, so planning specific issues and things like that would go to her, probably. Her name is Angela Torres. I'm sure Lori knows her. And but then, you know, even I had a -- it was a church that was having a hard time finding out what their Met Council SAC and WAC fees were going to be. And they had just had a logjam, so they called me. And I just called a few people till I could find out what was missing or what they needed. So, you know, but then there's also the piece of guiding towards policy. You know, if I know, like, say, we're talking the suburban to suburban kind of transit issues, you know, if I know what your issues and needs are, it makes it easier for me to speak up about them. Like, some of the things, like, I will often use Shakopee as an example right now, but that's just because I'm familiar with it. And for me, it helps to engage with you so that I, you know, can pull examples from different areas of the district, which I think is important. Because, you know, what you guys need will be different than what Shakopee needs, but that's my home, so it's easy to talk about. And so, the more you can inform me, the more I can figure out how to interject into conversations and our dialogue at meetings. So.
Thank you.
So I'll get better at it over time, I promise.
Other questions or comments?
Comment here? Just two things, as you talk about, you know, what you're paying attention to and what you're looking at and learning about, and I can sympathize, that's a lot of information to try to get through. Certainly, for us, transit has come up in the past, and in particular, in different ways than probably the majority of our areas around us. So transit's always something we're a little sensitive to, because, again, it's not something that is as big here as, say, Shakopee, or even Chaska, or that area. The other one is what we actually were recently talking about just at the last meeting, I think, which is around the housing, 2040 Housing Policy Plan and the new formula. And I know Ben has probably forwarded all that information onto council, but certainly, that's a big thing for us as well. When, as you look at the formula, it actually penalizes us quite a bit in terms of the way that it's thought about. And again, I'm not going to say we're totally unique, but we certainly have some things that we don't always lump in nicely with everybody else. So those two issues, I know, have been quite hot for us lately in areas that we've been looking at to pay attention to, so.
Thank you. And that will be the case for many of the cities, the smaller cities especially, that the priorities and the needs are different. And I think that's why it's important for me to make sure that I get out and talk to all of you. I mean, it's easy to represent and talk about, like, you take cities like Chaska and Shakopee, which are closer in and connected better with transit and things like that, or and have different, maybe with the global look at the policy, sort of fit the cookie cutter a little better. But, you know, I think there are ways to look at the policies to make them work for out here, but it's also important to be able to see it from your guys, all of your eyes, so that I can, you know, represent it fairly.
Welcome to Victoria.
Thank you. It's a beautiful city.
Seriously, we recognize that it's, we have to work together, and it's not always, we're not always on the same page, but hopefully, we'll understand where we differ. And we'll -- I hope you'll find us to be civil, fairly strong-willed, and hopefully, fairly competent, but always civil. And we recognize that we have to work together, and we look forward to working with you over the next, how many months?
About four years.
Next four years.
So I'm around for a while. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to it. And I will say, the staff's been very welcoming and helpful, and it's been.
Anything else for Deb?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Again, seriously, welcome to Victoria.
Thank you so much. And like I said, don't hesitate to call. I really do mean that.
Oh, we will.
Thank you.
Our next visitor presentation is Representative Jim Nash. Representative Nash represents District 47A.
Which is us.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Very happy to be here with you this evening. As I have sat in each of your chairs, not these, but as a council member and as a mayor, I've got a special place in my heart for cities and municipal government. And in my time, the long time now in the legislature, the months that I've been there, I do sit on several committees that impact municipal government, and I try to always both write and carry legislation and then vote in a way that is not going to penalize or harm small cities or cities in my district. Because I think statutory cities like Victoria don't always get the most attention from the legislature, and I've tried to shine a light on that in my time at the legislature so far. And Mayor O'Connor's come down to visit. And it's interesting that we have Met Council Night here, because we've talked about the Met Council quite a bit this past session. And that's one of the committees that I serve on, is I'm the vice chair of the Subcommittee on Met Council Reform. I sit on transportation as well. I am on government operations and elections and state government finance. Those things, I think, were chosen for me, given my background, both in business and in municipal government. I've spoken to many of you at your homes or here at the groundbreaking for the library. And I think you know of me that I have, like I said, a soft spot in my heart for city government, but that I want to be available to you at all times. And I've tried to get out here once. It was a snowy night at the Capitol, and I was on the agenda initially. It was almost a two-hour trek to get here. It didn't work out. And then, you may have seen, session got a little weird and a little long. And they say weird and long is kind of the norm, and we should get used to it. But you may have also seen that the governor has chosen to veto a few of our bills, and some of our other bills didn't move along. And I don't want to be overly partisan, but I think from a municipal perspective, particularly for Victoria, there are some things that were going to happen in our transportation plan, for example, that didn't. We had a transportation plan that invested heavily in roads and bridges. You know, we've talked a lot about transit, and Councilmember Bosa, you just mentioned that transit means something different to many of us in western Carver County. And not to dig in too far, but I think that there has been a lot of concentration lately on the issue of what transit means. And for myself and my role as your legislator, I want to really have a conversation around, what does that mean? What is the definition of the word transit? From my perspective, it's buses, because the people I represent, that's the first thing that they're going to use. I think that you'll get a little bit different from some folks on other sides of the aisle, and that's why I want to have a very respectful dialogue as to what do the people in my district need. I did do some fairly extensive polling. Many of you may have received the poll that I sent into the field. Almost no one in this district was very interested in high-speed light rail. So I think that's a very strong message. And again, I don't want to get overly partisan, so I'll stop there. But know that I am very interested in transit and transportation. As the former mayor in Waconia, for me, I think the biggest investment that we can make to allow cities to grow are roads and bridges. And I am going to be singularly dedicated to that. You look at what happened to Victoria during the full shutdown of Highway Five, and it wasn't pretty. But we see now is, now that that apron has been opened up on the bridge, it allows for greater capacity to move in and out of the city, and we see other transportation needs coming in. They're all in the form of a road. As the mayor in Waconia, I fought very long and hard to get several road projects that will be going on this summer. So if you plan on coming out to the Taste of Minnesota or Carver County Fair, beware, Highway Five is going to get a little messy. But roads matter, and roads are important. The township roads that we see around us, there are 5,500 township roads in the state of Minnesota, all of which need desperate attention. And the engineer over here is smiling because she knows that to be true. We have got to do a better job on funding transportation. And I think that we need to, as leaders of the state, both from the municipal election or municipal level, state house, state senate, governor, Met Council, we all have to get in a room and figure out, what is it that the people need? And, you know, even myself, do I have to put some of my personal agenda aside if I have one? Yes, probably so. We have to focus on what Minnesotans need. Folks in the Iron Range, folks in the southern part of the state, folks here in the Twin City and the seven-county metro, we've got to focus on what we need. From a what happened this session that directly impacts you, several of our bills got caught up. One thing that I'm reasonably proud of is, many of you know I own an IT company, and I've been in IT for a while. In the state government finance, I was able to save the state of Minnesota about $1.4 million in direct personnel costs. So if you look at a $41 billion budget, that's kind of a small portion. But when you look at a personnel perspective, that's a lot of folks. And what we were able to do, given my background, was work on some Minnesota IT or MINIT reforms. And oddly enough, there are 13 CIOs, Chief Information Officers, in the state of Minnesota. Now, if you think about that first word, chief, and then the fact that there's that many of them, it might make you scratch your head. So I introduced the bill, and we got it shepherded through to eliminate those duplicative gentlemen. And we will hopefully see those savings realized very soon. We had some other great reforms, directly affecting you, Lori, and other folks. You'll see a change effective, I believe, on June or July 1st. The filing fees for municipal elections have now been changed. As a statutory city, and I believe you are a city of the third class, I think, your filing fees, I believe, are at $5 for, or $2 for city council. Well, as a former mayor, I saw that that just didn't get the job done, and that you usually lose money just by printing off the mandatory packet you have to hand to candidates. So the bill that I introduced, which got changed in conference committee, but it allowed you to set the filing fee. So if your fees are $18.12, then that's what you charge. It's odd, and government reacts very slowly, and I would encourage you all to look at some of your ordinances that you've got on the books. Some of them are really old. And the ordinance that I changed hadn't been changed since the Eisenhower administration. That was a while ago. So in the 1950s, that's when the states set filing fees for municipal elections at $2, $5, and $10. And charter cities have that ability to set it at their own. But so, minor bill, but it does benefit many of the cities around the state. A lot of the other things that we did, if you ever come out to Waconia, I would encourage you to do so. We've got a fine distillery out there. You've got a great brewery here. But we also have a distillery out there. One of the bills that I carried allowed the distillery to sell on-site, much like farm wineries and breweries have the ability to sell their wares on-site. Another archaic arcane law on the books made it so that you couldn't sell a bottle to someone. And Tom, if he wanted to come, or either of the Toms, if he wanted to come and buy a bottle after touring the distillery, they would have to send you away empty-handed. And now we fixed that. So, you know, this is, for me, it's about a lot of equipping businesses to succeed. And I've introduced a lot of bills that do just that. They're trying to get government out of the way of small business, trying to get government out of the way of other units of government. And Mayor O'Connor, you and I have sat in my office down at the legislature and talked about what do we do at the Capitol that adversely affects folks here in Victoria. I think I could probably make a long year out of articulating those types of things that really need to be dealt with at the legislative level to get some outdated pieces of legislation out of the way of municipal government. I am very much a fan of local control, and you'll probably hear me say that a lot down at the legislature and here in the district. So, you know, I came to mostly answer questions, and I appreciate the time you've given me, and I would love to answer anything that you might want to know.
Anybody wish? We can't let you leave here without handicapping the special session. The governor vetoed a couple of fairly important bills.
Yeah. So the biggest, or the first bill that was vetoed, was the Education Omnibus Bill. And the Education Omnibus Bill was a bipartisan bill. And I really, I have to say, this is the one that was the biggest disappointment that was vetoed, because the Senate, as you know, is in DFL hands, and the House is in GOP hands. And we came together, and we thought, what's going to work best to equip teachers and students and superintendents and ultimately, parents to send their kids off to public school to get a quality education? And both bills started off very differently in their partisan houses, and they came together in conference committee, and it was agreed upon that this is what we would move forward. And unfortunately, the governor saw it differently. And as you may have seen, he is somewhat dedicated to the notion of universal all-day pre-K, or universal pre-K of varying lengths of day. And in doing some research, and Mayor O'Connor, you can attest to the fact that I like to do a lot of background research and know my stuff, I reached out to every single superintendent that I serve. So the superintendent here in eastern Carver County, the superintendents in Watertown, mayor in Norwood, Young America, and Waconia, and to a person, none of them won it. And I think the most important number that I got out of all of those superintendents was from the superintendent of Waconia, District 110. And his name is Pat Devine, and he shared with me that if universal pre-K were to happen, it would be roughly a $17.25 million levy to the folks in District 110. Because they don't have the space, they don't have the buildings, they don't have the teachers, they don't have the materials, they don't have the stuff, chairs, desks, and whatnot in the infrastructure to bring that into reality. And even after the money that would come from the state-funded part of the program, it would still be that number. The numbers varied. Some school districts actually have a little bit of space. They'd have to rent some buildings, or they'd have to hire teachers. But the lowest number I got was a $475,000 levy over and above what was going to happen. And you, I've all, as I said, I've sat in your chairs, and making the smallest change on the levy weighs heavy on the people who have to cast that vote. And it weighs heavy on the taxpayers who sit at home at the kitchen table, filling out their bills for the month, and they look at the checkbook, and they think, I just don't have any more left. So the message that I've been sharing is, we don't need this. And we'll have to go to special session and figure it out. But I think that if folks watching at home, or even folks here, were interested, I'm happy to answer questions about that. I know you've got a full agenda, so I'll make myself available via email or cellphone. But it's an important issue. It's every bit as important as transportation, because the education of our kids is absolutely critical. As a parent of six, I want to make sure that my kids are getting a good education, but I also want to make sure that we're not levying money in the district for things that really are unsustainable.
I certainly applaud you, as we all do, for reaching out to the people who would be most directly affected, the superintendents of schools. I wonder how many of your counterparts did that before they cast a vote?
That's an excellent question.
I shouldn't ask. Don't answer that.
I would hope that all representatives, both in the Senate and the House, would reach out to the people who would be affected by a decision made at the Capitol.
And you talked about the impact on 110 in terms of the 17 million, but there was a whole list of negative impacts. I mean, who's watching out for that stuff, if not you and your colleagues?
Well, I would invite you down to the Capitol to make your presence known. I actually welcome people from the district to come down to my office. Mayor O'Connor, you've been there. I'm happy to tour you around. It's not much to see right now, since it's all under construction. And apparently, we're going to be meeting on the lawn, so if you want to come and bring an umbrella and hang out with me when we hit special session, come down, bring a bag lunch. We're going to have a good time. But, you know, I think the thing that I'd like to leave you with, unless you have other questions, is just what a tremendous honor it is to serve you down there. And I really mean that. It sounds somewhat Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, but for me, it really is. I sit in that chamber, and I will look up sometimes during debate, and I see just amazing architecture. And to think that since 1915, lawmakers have met in that building, and the decisions that they make there impact the people here and across the state of Minnesota. And I remind myself that every day when I sit there. And every time I push a button, either red or green, or I get up and make a floor speech, I remind myself that the folks who sent me there have high expectations and that I don't want to let you down. And it is an incredible honor to be there.
Well, when you have a need where we can help, you know, ring, you just ring, and we'll be down.
I am happy to do so, and I'm happy that you have. I put out an email last minute the night before, when I needed you to come testify on something, and you showed up. I appreciate that.
It's important stuff. Any questions for Representative Nash? Jim, thank you, and continued success in the legislature. Good luck with the special session.
Thanks.
Next, we'll go to the consent agenda. That's where several items are approved with one motion. They're deemed to be non-controversial unless somebody in the council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda. They'll be approved with one motion. Anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No.
I may motion to approve the consent.
And move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've approved the consent agenda.
Yes, fine.
Reminder not to say anything stupid.
Keep your sense of humor.
All right. First, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is the ordinance adding small brewer off-sale Sunday liquor licenses. Lori?
I'd ask City Clerk Jenny Crash to give a brief staff report on this item.
I'd ask City Clerk Jenny Crush to give a brief staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is coming before you due to a state change in state statute. The legislature changed the statute to allow licensing jurisdictions, which is the cities, to allow small brewers to sell growlers at off-sale on Sundays. If the city wishes to amend the city code to add that licensing option, the city can change our code of ordinances to add that license to allow small brewers to sell growlers at off-sale on Sunday. And the ordinance, if approved, basically what I did was take, I took our code from both the on-sale and off-sale to make the hours basically work and the same, so there's correlation between the two. So it's Sunday hours from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the legal holiday exceptions for the regular off-sale hours as well. And, you know, again, growlers will not be allowed to be sold at off-sale on Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, just like the regular off-sale licensing. So there's a combination of the existing code written into this code if it is going to be approved. John Hayes has requested this amendment as well for Anki Brewery. And many other breweries, I've researched this, are also making this request to allow for the off-sale licensing option to sell growlers. So there's a lot of cities out there that are making this change as well.
Thank you, Jenny. Before we hear from the council, let me open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward. John?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm John Hayes. I'm the resident of Victoria and also the co-founder of Anki Brewing. And I do encourage you to vote in favor of passing this change to the ordinance that would allow for Sunday growler sales. I thought I should explain why. When you look at the nature of our business, it is people come and buy the brewery to visit, have a beer, and take one home. And the days that most people are available to do that are Saturdays and Sundays. And we're able, thanks to an ordinance change a year ago, to allow them to come in on Sundays and have a beer at the brewery, but we have to send them home without taking a growler home. And so with this ordinance, they would be able to have that same experience on either Saturday or Sunday, or for that matter, other days of the week. There is strong demand for craft beer in the United States. It's growing at about 13% to 15% a year. It's projected to be over 20% of beer sales by 2020. And demand by itself isn't the only reason for this. When we look at Minnesota, if you look at where we were three or four years ago, we were substantially lagging behind the rest of the country. Just talked with the Department of Alcohol and Gaming, and they are projecting that by 12 months from now, we will have over 200 breweries in the state of Minnesota. And that's, well, two years ago, when we got our license, we were the 43rd brewery. So when you think about the growth, it's phenomenal. So there's clearly demand, but the reasons for that growth go beyond the demand. We had the so-called surly bill that allowed for taprooms and for us to sell growlers. And then we had the expansion of that to allow for the taproom to be open on Sundays. And then with this legislation that was just passed, potential for selling growlers on Sunday. So clearly, a more positive environment within the state has fostered strong growth of our industry, and I encourage you to continue to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wish to address the council? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing. Invite the council now to comment. Tom?
Small technical question. This ordinance is directed at small brewers. I'm wondering what the definition is of a small brewer? Anybody know?
Our research department is looking at.
Do you know exactly how many barrels?
Growler law permits up to 500 barrels a year. Last year, we produced a total of about 800 barrels. A barrel is 31 gallons. If you look at some other breweries around the state, many of them are about 10,000 to 15,000 barrels. Microbreweries are considered, and you can keep changing the definition, but anything less than 200,000 barrels is still considered a microbrewery, but this is very small.
Thank you.
Well done, Jenny.
I have it right here highlighted.
Any other comments or questions?
One quick question, Mr. Mayor. The 10:00 p.m., how did that come about? Why wouldn't we have that open later? And is Saturdays, can we sell them later Friday? That just seems pretty early for a Friday and Saturday night.
The 10:00 p.m. is on Sundays, because this is off-sale on Sundays for the growlers. So the, under the ordinance, it's Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays. So this is specific only for off-sales on Sundays.
So someone could go into Anki, drink till midnight, but they couldn't take a, is that correct?
With the on-sale.
I see John saying yes.
Yeah, jump in here, jump in here. Come on up here.
It's probably faster.
Yep. Trying to look at it here.
That would be the same situation as we currently have on Saturdays where we do have off-sale. We can, we're open till 10:00 p.m. But actually, I think it's 9:00 p.m. that we stopped selling growlers. And we asked people, is it 9:00 or 10:00?
9:00.
I think it's 9:00 p.m. that we asked people to take their growlers, put them in their car, or go, you know, go home with them.
Why?
State law. Liquor stores are open till 9:00 p.m., aren't they? And so we're like a liquor store.
Liquor stores are 10:00 p.m.
Okay, I've got it backwards. That's right. So we allow growler sales until 10:00 p.m., even though we're open later than 10:00 p.m. Okay? So just like a liquor store, when we are selling a growler, we're like a liquor store. And when we're selling you a pint of beer, we're like any other tavern or restaurant. So we have to have people leave the premises by 10:00 p.m. with their growlers.
And there's, I guess we can't change that because it's state law?
Yeah, it's state statute.
Any other questions for Jenny or John? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance number 389, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 by adding small brewer off-sale growler Sunday liquor licenses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we're going to deal with the topic of Lake Town. First, the zoning, and then the preliminary plat. The way we're organized, I should let the city manager go through the process, but we're going to have Ben talk first, kind of frame the issue, then I'll open the public hearing. And anybody who wishes to address us on the zoning issue as part of the public hearing, or the preliminary plat, which technically is not part of the public hearing, but we're going to allow anybody who wants to speak to that topic to do so. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then we will discuss, and then we'll vote on the ordinances and the plat. So, clear? Hopefully? Ben?
Ben, go into the presentation.
Okay. Well, I realize there's a group of people here that didn't come to listen to me talk, so I'll try to cover all bases and give everyone a clear understanding of kind of what we're doing tonight, what's being considered, and kind of what's changed since the last time the council saw this, that being both the rezoning and the preliminary plat. So tonight, highlighted the two areas that I'll cover with this presentation, the rezoning and the preliminary plat. Highlighting, and this is a little premature, but we will be recommending as staff approval of the second reading, adopting the zoning change, and also the preliminary plat, but I'd be happy to come back.
So sorry, this is going to be distracting, but some of our computers aren't working. Try to get it back. Counsel can see what we're talking about.
Good to go.
I'm sorry. We couldn't see the presentation.
Okay. With that, I'll keep moving, unless you have questions about the process. Okay. So graphically, to kind of understand the two different parts, in red is the area proposed to be developed as part of the preliminary plat. The blue area outlined on this graphic identifies the area proposed to change for zoning to allow for single-family residential. If we'll recall back to the sketch plat, when we talked about Lake Town 9th Edition, there were three different phases of that development. The first phase is consistent with the preliminary plat area that's highlighted in red. And there was a second area identified as Phase 2 that's the remainder of the blue area. That was additional single-family residential. And then a portion of property located here have identified as townhomes. Today, we're not including that in the zoning because it deals with a use that we're not working on today. As a comparison, this just from a zoning perspective, so from a zoning standpoint, we regulate developments based on setbacks and other bulk regulations to try to provide for orderly development throughout a subdivision. So if you look at some of the things that were done in the first through eighth edition that are on the left side of the screen versus things that are on the right, generally, yes, there are differences in all of them. But part of the idea of doing a planned unit development is to work with the ground as it lays and maybe allow for some variations in some of those regulatory tools that allow for development to occur in the spirit of what the zoning ordinance would otherwise allow. So as a plat, this is 99 single-family lots, generally west of Victoria Elementary School. Several new roads going in as part of this development. And part of what I'll get to in a minute is kind of what has happened since the original plat. But today, we have 99 single-family lots, generally a portion of this property draining towards the existing detention pond in Outlot S of the first edition, a portion generally this area here draining down and going into a new detention pond that would go in. The remaining lots here funneling into this detention, sorry, not detention pond, stormwater pond, bad habit. And the remaining of the property going to other existing features, because we have four lots proposed here on Martin Gale that's more a continuation of development than had been started with the fourth edition when these lots had gone in. More a close-up, what you'll see specifically related to zoning, there are 11 lots throughout the 99 being proposed within this phase that are requesting a front yard setback decrease. Going through part of the neighborhood meetings and working with the developer, we tried to provide opportunities where possible to have a better transition. That being, we had a lot of concerns from residents that they wanted to see if larger homes could be accommodated within this ninth edition. So the developer worked with their engineer to basically test all of the sites in the plat. And the 11 lots are identified in kind of this green-blue throughout the next couple slides are areas where a developable pad of 65 feet would require a 25-foot front yard setback in lieu of a 30-foot front yard setback, like the remainder of the development. None of those lots proposed to have the 25-foot setback are next to existing homes in the development. Most of them are kind of tucked internal to that site, but it does allow for more of a continuous build-out of that development, allowing for larger home sites throughout. So if you look at the original concept of what was done in kind of the 2003, 2004 timeframe, there were 94 lots within the developed area being proposed with the preliminary plat. You can see those arranged on the left. Tonight, we have 99 lots being proposed within this preliminary plat, and the developer is looking at acquiring 10 additional acres from the Hess property that'd be on the south portion of this property. So you can see on the original plan, this wasn't spoken to because they did not own or control that property. As of today's circumstances, they've worked out an arrangement to acquire this property. And it does a couple of things. It doesn't just allow the developer to add five lots, if we call it five lots. They're also working with some of the existing natural conditions, primarily wetlands, to move and meander the road connection from Wasserman Lake Woods over to the intersection with Martin Gale Lane. If we would look back at this proposal, you can see kind of a similar jog had been taking place. Today's condition is there's an existing field road. So we're trying to limit the amount of impact to the wetlands through this area by improving upon kind of an existing entity there, and then working to move the rest of the roadway without further encumbering some of those wetland areas. You won't be able to read this very well, but it does have kind of a breakdown of what all's proposed for landscaping. The developers required to put together an inventory of trees that would be removed as part of development. And then they're also supposed to identify, based upon a schedule that's in our ordinance, what their replacement is. We generally, as a city, have a requirement for two trees to be planted per lot, but this development, this landscape plan proposed by Lennar incorporates all of the replacement caliper inches that are being removed as part of getting some of the lots in, back into this neighborhood. And that does a couple of different things. One, we've raised the level of landscaping throughout the development that may otherwise not occur. In the past, the city has also accepted a cash in lieu of any caliper inches that can't be replaced onsite. In this case, we are able to incorporate all of those into the property. Another item that's been brought up going through kind of the neighborhood meetings was this caution or concern about not having a consistent tree canopy or that boulevard tree look. This plan does introduce that boulevard tree aesthetic back into the neighborhood. And in some cases, such as this area here along Carriage Drive, the developer is proposing to put in a landscape buffer to try to mitigate other concerns that aren't related to landscaping, but having the sides of homes facing Carriage Drive, whereas the majority of the rest of homes along that street do face Carriage. So this is one way that we're trying to work within kind of the existing conditions as they set, where some preliminary grading had been done for these existing, for these streets, excuse me, planning for them to extend from Carriage in this manner. But the buffer does add an element of kind of separating views from the roadway and those adjacent existing properties from the new area being proposed. If you look closely at some of these, the small little green dots you see are existing trees. So there's a substantial amount of canopy that is remaining in some of those wetland areas that get dedicated to the city. Another big topic that's come up that we've been working through since the sketch plat phase of this development is parkland dedication. As you can see from some of these charts, the original development of Lake Town included about 350 acres of property. Our parkland dedication ordinance requires 11% of the developable portion of any property to be dedicated to the city for. of any property to be dedicated to the city for parkland. So if we take out the wetlands, we end up with a net parcel of roughly 275. And depending on if we look at the 2003 calculations or the more current ones that we, that the developer had looked at in 2014, you can see that we roughly end up with a requirement for parkland dedication around 30 acres, give or take. To date, the city has received from the developer a little over 28 acres of dedication. The city entered into an agreement on its own for dedicating a portion of that property for Victoria Elementary School, roughly 9.72 acres. And then the remaining 18 acres we've retained as Lake Town Park to date. If you look at kind of what's remaining then, we have a little over two acres of dedication that needed to be given by Lennar as part of the entire portion of property that they still own. What we've been doing at a staff level and even working with some of the neighborhoods is exploring parkland options. So we kind of had two topics that emerged. One, we have new development that's coming in, and we have kind of a deficit or a shortfall in dedication needing to be given. But we also heard from the neighborhood that there were existing concerns with the playground space that was available on the elementary school site. We have an agreement with the school district that has basically the first right for that playground space because it's located on school property to be for the school to use as they see fit when they have their operations or their programming in place on that site. Had this development being Lake Town Ninth Edition not come forward, we had already planned, we being the city, had already planned to build a playground structure that was for the residents of Lake Town. We have a budget planned out. We just hadn't identified a location for that. So as part of going through this exercise and working to address some of the concerns raised by the neighborhood, we've been going through where's the best location to locate that playground structure. Most of the discussion related to the remaining dedication needed has focused on what are the key objectives that are in the best interest of the neighborhood. To date, our opinion, being staff's opinion, is that a trail through Outlot S, which is located on this property here, would be the best use of that remaining dedication because with the remaining, with the other improvements being proposed as the Ninth Edition, we do create a continuous one-mile loop through this development. We also provide a direct connection from the Ninth Edition to Victoria Elementary School without forcing kids to cross the street, A Street, excuse me, three other times if that route was not in place. The other part to understand, kind of in dedicating parkland, if you look at just the total area of space that's been dedicated over the years by the developer and include our parkland dedication, the city, once the Ninth Edition goes through, whether that's in multiple phases or just as proposed today in one, we will have 44.5% of the total acreage they started with being dedicated to the city. That does not include right-of-way for any of the roadways. It also doesn't include additional open space because we have more wetlands further south in the outlot that they're reserving for future development. So we're likely to see that number continue to increase over time. We talked specifically about the playground that we've kind of co-discussed with this development process. Ann's been good at working with the park committee to kind of go through a couple different possible locations. Today, their recommendation is for the park, or excuse me, the playground equipment to be located somewhere in the city's current park space south of the elementary school. We do recognize that there may be some challenges just in communicating kind of responsibilities with the school district. Per our joint use agreement, we do have the ability to install playground equipment and restrict the school district's use to being minimal for anything that goes into the, can't remember the specific terminology. I think it's park facilities area, which is basically the lot or series of lots that the city owns. But we do recognize that there may be some challenges because teachers that have, you know, recess duty, they go out with their kids to the existing playground, and in most cases, will use the open playfield space right off of the school's property onto the city park at the same time. So we do want to make sure that we don't just put playground equipment in there and again, cause maybe some confusion for who gets to use it, when. But those are things we can work out moving forward. So to date, we've just identified that this is a preferred location, but that is not intended to be part of Lennar's dedication requirements for this development. Going through, again, kind of that exploration phase, we did have discussion at one point in time about utilizing Outlot S, which is the area here. It's also the majority of the space identified in the sketch to locate that playground space. Ann and I both met with a number of residents, both along kind of the outlot to kind of gauge their comfort level with seeing kind of this more active space begin to occur, as well as a number of other residents that did attend. It was at that meeting that we determined, you know, the existing residents hadn't planned to see that type of activity take place in that rear yard. Some of them maybe still weren't crazy about the trail, but I think generally, they said the playground being located in this space is not really our preferred thing to see. This just highlights kind of the magnitude of wetlands throughout, not only the Ninth Edition, but some of the existing portions of the Lake Town development. Most of these that may be difficult to see kind of have a hatching around the wetlands, which are delineated with the green dots. Those are just average buffer requirements that are following many Ha Ha Creeks requirements for providing a space that would filter or kind of reuse the water prior to entering that natural amenity. I'll try not to read these verbatim, but most people should have received kind of a handout on their chair that talked about kind of quick facts. And I would note, this is more something that I prepared and put together. This probably doesn't, wasn't intended to include all of the topics that have been brought up to date by the residents, but these are the bigger or the continuous topics that we've heard kind of throughout the entire process. So the parkland dedication, I talked about kind of where we are as far as progress on meeting some of their concerns. But again, not having a defined location at the time we were talking about sketch plat. I think we've been pretty clear in neighborhood meetings and other correspondence to the neighborhood, kind of the progression of how that's taken place. Acknowledge that that school agreement was not allowing for the use of the existing playground space, and we do believe that we can get to a situation where they have access to a piece of equipment and maybe some other amenities, like a shelter, that would make that park more of a community park and allow for different uses within that so it doesn't feel like just an extension of the school property. It really is a park as it was intended. And then they just wanted a location that was accessible to residents. So kind of doing that vetting out of what's the best location. Ultimately, both from the park committee's standpoint and from staff's perspective, having that playground be located on the existing park space does something that other locations wouldn't really allow, which is if you had, say, a couple of kids, you could go and have one of them play baseball or soccer or do some, you know, play frisbee, and maybe a different kid has other interests and wants to go recreate on a piece of playground equipment. We don't have that same scenario if we were to move that playground structure somewhere else within the development. The Carriage Drive lots, there's been quite a bit of discussion about the fact that there are four lots proposed currently that have been shown through the course of kind of the concept phase for Lake Town that have the side of homes facing Carriage Drive, drive. And there's a group of residents that have continued to express concern with that being kind of a disconnect from some of the rest of the street. There are a majority of homes on that street that do face Carriage Drive. So seeing the side in this area is not similar to that condition, but it would not also be a foreign condition to the road. There are townhomes that back to Carriage Drive elsewhere in the development. There's some townhomes that have the side of them facing Carriage Drive, as well as one other existing single-family residence that does face that street as well. What we've tried to do, because the roadways had originally been kind of graded out, and even we have approaches from Carriage Drive onto the new streets, is introduce that landscape buffer, which while not maybe the preferred answer to some of the residents that don't want to see kind of the sides of homes in that open space between the backyards, we do feel like this is within our means of a good solution for the residents. These were renderings that were put out by Lennar. So the top one just kind of showed one of those two block stretches, the bottom being kind of what is proposed, where you have kind of streets on either side and kind of this common backyard. This was done prior to moving that landscape buffer closer to the street. So these trees are actually further away than what they're intended to be. But facing homes towards Carriage Drive does a couple of things. One, it does face them so they're similar to the homes across the street and further down to the right. But it also would require Lennar to reconfigure some of the lots adjacent. So instead of having kind of four lots off of Carriage Drive that would face those new streets, they'd be reconfigured into four lots that would face the street. One of the issues in doing that, we have the ability to run services to the end homes, but we did not plan for the kind of middle lots in this case to be served from Carriage Drive. So it would require ripping up the street to some extent to install those services to allow for that to take place. I've talked a little about the landscaping and trees. We are reintroducing the boulevard trees throughout the development. And by incorporating all of the replacement caliper inches into the development, we're providing a more consistent, higher number of trees per lot within the development as a whole, which was a general concern that had been brought up through some of the neighborhood meetings. The HOA, while this isn't a public or a city matter necessarily, the neighborhood had kind of expressed concern that when the Eighth Edition went in, that was a different HOA than the existing single-family in the development. What we've tried to do, I've met with the existing, excuse me, with the First through Seventh Edition, Single Family HOA Board. They would like more information as to what it would mean to start joining those HOAs in the future. And Lennar is certainly open to having that discussion and walking through the steps if everyone can kind of agree that that's what they want to do moving forward. Access and traffic management, certainly from the original concept where there were more through streets that have been eliminated due to wetland conditions, there's some general concern about the number of lots that would dump onto not only Red Fox Drive, which was designed as a major collector, but also seeing all of those home sites then spill onto Carriage Drive or Lakeside Drive, which is that east-west connector from Wasserman Lake Woods. We've started going through the process of collecting data on kind of current conditions. We'll continue to monitor those as the development work to get built out. We have the ability to, if we need to look at better traffic management along Red Fox or elsewhere in the development for things like stop sign warrants or better signage, we can certainly do that. But we're trying to gather that baseline data prior to development so that we know what to do as trends may change in the future. Environmental impact, several different things have come up. We have people identifying concerns that they recognized wetlands were in place and didn't want to see the developer go into any of those areas. For the most part, they are staying out of it with any of the new home sites. The one area that they are impacting to some degree, the wetlands, is more a city requirement than a developer requirement, making that connection of Lakeside Drive from Wasserman Lake Woods over to Red Fox Drive was something that's been on our comprehensive plan as kind of just best practices of managing traffic and providing alternative routes within developments. So there is roughly an acre or so that does get impacted, and Lennar will be working with the various agencies on getting their permitting to do that. But that's today, the biggest area of impact. But it's more driven by a requirement that the city had for them. There's also the existence of an Eagle's Nest. If I went back to, excuse me, this peninsula area, Eagle's Nest is located in this direction. When Wasserman Lake Woods came in, they had to get a permit through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department. Lennar has been working with the Fish and Wildlife Department to determine whether or not that same permit applies to them because the lots proposed within the Ninth Edition are not as close as some of the lots that were shown kind of in this area of Wasserman Lake Woods. If they do determine that a permit's needed, they'll get that permit. I've been in regular correspondence with my contact at Lennar to make sure that we understand kind of where we stand with that. What the permit does is it would restrict some activities to times that aren't impactful to that Eagle's Nest location, but it doesn't prevent them from putting any of those lots in. And I would say overall, they're, they've reduced since the sketch plat where they had trails going out to that island and kind of surrounding an area close to the Eagle's Nest, we've kind of removed all impacts to that entity as part of this process. And then there was brought up at the most recent neighborhood meeting, just kind of an initial concern with the amount of trees that would be removed as part of this development going in. What I tried to explain at that meeting, and what I guess I'd say here, is most developments have some level of impact to existing conditions, whether it's wetlands or trees. What the developer has been really thoughtful in doing is trying to kind of juggle that, walk that line as close as possible. We are, we do have tree preservation replacement requirements that they are following. And I would say, for the most part, the biggest impact they could have had was to some of those wetland areas that they've minimized as much as possible. It had always been planned that some of these lots and streets would be located where they are. And they're doing the best they can with the existing conditions to work with the amount of trees that exist on-site. So then there was just kind of a general topic of what are some of these improvements going to do to the value of property? Obviously, we had the market shift that occurred. But there are other things that I think we've put, if you'd say, value-added back into the proposal. Things like the boulevard trees going in, having lot sizes that are of consistent size that allows for some larger homes to be built on them. Really testing this plan to have, you know, as best as we can, a continuation or more of a harmonious impact to the existing development is kind of what's taken place to date. That's what I have is the short, long summary to date. Be happy to answer, happy to answer any questions.
David, first, let's, I'm going to open up the public hearing so we can hear, before we talk about this, we can hear from the residents. So if you'd wish to address the council when I open the public hearing, just come on up and state your name and address, and please have a seat so we can get you recorded on the microphone. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to address the council?
Thank you, guys, very much for at least taking the opportunity to hear what we have to say. My name is Casey Garvin. I'm the president of the Lake Town Homeowners Association. Been working very closely with Ben, as well as the HOA, to sort of identify some of these concerns, and I think the first thing I'd like to say, this is really intimidating, by the way.
You're doing fine.
Right?
You're doing fine.
Keep it up. Did I dress appropriately?
You're fine.
So I've got a pregnant wife at home, and it's her birthday today, so that shows how much I care about this. So as the president of the homeowners association, I get phone calls, I get emails, I get drive-bys, not of the violent type, that are all wondering what is going on with this particular situation. And the only thing that I can tell them is, we don't know. We know that there was a plan that was developed back in 2006 that as we, do I have control of this thing? Can we go back to like the overall, like the satellite view?
Is this?
With the actual, yeah, that one's probably good. Do I have a thing? So when you look at this, I think the first thing that I'd just like to call out is, not many of us grew up in Victoria. It's a very transient neighborhood. We grew up in the southwest metro and found ourselves out here because we loved the character. We loved the aesthetic value as you drive through the neighborhood, and you saw just how different each little section of Victoria and Lake Town in particular is. And, you know, you think about that, we've got a golf course, we've got lakes, we've got ponds, we've got forest areas, we've got homes that are all in the mid-to-upper tier of what you anticipate a premium home would look like. And when I look at this plan, especially when I see what happened from the original plan, where I think 94 homes were proposed, and now we're up to 99 homes, I don't see any value. I see a lot of homes clumped in in a very small concentrated area. And I think when you look at this and you look throughout the neighborhood, I mean, this is, this is, it's an eyesore. There's no consistency whatsoever with what any of the first through seventh additions have. And I don't think it's any surprise to us that this just, it comes off as a cash grab from the developer. The developer, who by the way, and I'm sure we have residents here that were original homeowners, were promised to be surrounded themselves by premium homes, even though this plan was still sort of, still sort of an eyesore. And I would invite you guys to seriously consider taking a look at what, and asking yourselves, what value does specifically this little area right in here, is that mouse going out? Can you see it? I just, I just don't see a value there. What you're going to end up seeing, especially when you see the types of homes that are going to be going in there, a proposed Rambler, there's not a single Rambler in Lake Town, to my knowledge. And Ramblers typically only work if the elevation allows it, so that you can have a walkout looking out over a hill. Well, this is flat land. And I think when you stack all of those elements back-to-back, and you take no pun intended, the homes back-to-back, you're not going to see a lot of folks that already want to come into this city, because this is a city of prestige. We are the, we're the second highest median income in the entire state next to Edina, which by the way, that's where I grew up. So I'd like to surpass them at some point. You're going to see a devalued plan of essentially taking what we have right now of approximately 100 homes, and taking a quarter of that and stacking them back-to-back by, yeah, you're masking them with trees, but that doesn't take away the value as you drive down these streets and see no character. So with that, would it be okay if I posed a question to the council and asked you to answer honestly, what value would you see with the exception of increasing your tax base within this plan? And I would love to hear those points of view.
We'll address that when the public hearing is closed, and then it's our turn. No, I'm not going to close anything yet. When we close the public hearing, then we'll have a chance, the council will have a chance to respond to Casey's and other questions, so.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
My name's Linda Schiflett, and I live at 1855 Carriage Drive. I spoke at the open hearing, so I apologize, I'm going to be speaking again on similar points, but I know there are some new faces here tonight. My home is adjacent to the new development, and I can show you here. So I am number six here, and we, when we purchased this home, knew we would have homes in our backyard. So for 10 years, we've anticipated that. We are not concerned that we will have homes, because we knew that going into it. My concern, however, is the number of homes in this very small area, similar, I think you said your name was Darby?
I'm Casey.
Casey.
Still Darby.
Okay, good. Yeah, green shirt, I love it. So there were 43 homes in this small area prior to the replodding, and there are now 53 homes. There's one last access route to get out of here, and unlike the seventh edition, which my understanding is we're going to have similar-priced homes, similar look and feel, I actually think that's a very nice-looking development. Lennar has nothing to be ashamed of about that development. However, it's not consistent with the homes that are in this area, the existing homes, and it's not an extension of a development. For the seventh edition, we have access route to County Road 11. So that feels like an extension. You pretty much can, you know, kind of contain that whole development. But here, we're contained onto Carriage Drive. So we have 53 homes or 54 homes with all exiting onto Carriage Drive, and it's just a different look and feel. We have on Carriage Drive currently, they're all side-facing lots. So our frontage is quite large. I think, you know, I'd like to see the number of homes that are 80 feet on average in width compared to the number of homes that are 70 feet average in width. I would say there's probably one or two homes that are 80 feet currently in the existing development, which is the low end, and I'd say the majority of homes are probably 70 to 75 in the new development. So we're going from very nice frontages, feeling of a little higher-end homes, to kind of a house farm of homes that are very tightly packed together, and there's 10 more. So getting back to Casey's point about the tax base, 10 more homes on an average, you know, $6,000 per home per year, that's a nice tax base. So that is very concerning as to the people that have been paying exorbitant amounts of taxes while our home values have gone down over the past 10 years. We're once again taking a hit in potential value deflation of our homes. Not to mention that there will be probably two cars per home in that area, so that's an additional 20 cars in that contained area that will be exiting onto Carriage Drive. It would be potentially different if there was another access route through the subdivision, but I don't see that. So that's my concern about the value of the property. My second concern is about the wetlands. Wetlands are surrounding this area of homes. Why is it that we think that the wetlands will contain themselves within that little plot? Because there's really not much of a difference in elevation where those homes are. They can build it up all they want, but my home sits quite a bit higher than these homes. And although we've had some rain today, the spring has been extremely dry compared to past springs where we've had flooding in rivers, and there is ponding. In fact, I never thought in a million years that they would actually build back there because of all the water we've seen. So I'm very concerned for those new homeowners, and I want to state for the record that there is water behind there. And I am very concerned for those people, because they're going to build their dream home, they're going to move in, and they're going to have water in their basement, and they're going to ask Lennar to fix it, and Lennar's not going to be, based on history of my neighbors, they are not good about running to the aid of new homeowners. They're kind of stuck. And so I would like to state that for the record, when homeowners come back complaining to the city about water in their basement, that I'm warning, because I've lived there, I should have taken pictures. So I do want to end and just say that I'm very, I've been impressed with this process. The parks, I'm excited about the connected community. There's a lot of good things that have come out of this process, but when it comes to the value of our homes, I don't really feel like that has been a concern that has really been addressed, besides, you know, a few points on a slide. And it's just, I think a lot of people are here because of that. So I would encourage anybody to speak up. I'm not articulate like Casey, but I feel very passionate about this, so.
You're doing fine.
Hi, I'm Kelly Becker. I live at 1850 Carriage Drive, and that's right across the road from Linda. So I will thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Councilman, also. I will second Linda's assessment of the water situation, because we have seen that. Not this spring, because it has been dry, but there is a ton of water back there. We've seen that year after year, rivers, ponding, very consistently. So that would be also a concern of ours. I know there are things that can be done with that, tiling and that type of thing, but there's also been issues with tiling later on to Linda's point, after the, you know, the builder's well gone. And then, you know, does the city end up holding that bag? You know, I don't know, but I just, I can see issues with that coming up, so I'd like to second Linda's assessment with the water damage. And also Casey's comments. I don't want to reiterate what other people have said, but I certainly stand behind the comments that they have made. And then I have a couple of additional things. We have a little boy, and unknowns to a lot of our neighbors yet, we are expecting, so that's news for some.
Congratulations.
So, you know, the park is really important to us. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting where the location was discussed at the Lake Town Park, I think it's called, but I do have concerns about that, some of which Ben already brought up. I am concerned about the times, the days that you do want to go to the park are when the school is open. And while they might be restricted from that area, there tends to be a lot of activity, you know, in the fields for gym class, and my husband's a teacher, a fayad teacher, and I can't think of fayad, but there's fayad classes in those fields. So I'm just concerned about the level of activity there. I'm concerned about the, because of so much traffic coming through on that road with that connection to Lake Wasserman, I would, you know, you're going to go to Target, you know, yeah, you're going to take the shortcut through there, right, and come out across by Bavaria there, and, you know, we're trying to cross the road to get to the park, and there's increased traffic, also from the school, traffic from the school. I think even after-school activities, then there's lacrosse and there's soccer activities also there. So there's people coming and going and dropping off their kids, and again, at the times that you would want to be taking the younger kids to the park, now you've got, you know, increased activity and increased traffic at those times. So, you know, I don't know the solution for the park. I'd, I guess my ask is to vote no for the preliminary plat, because I'd like to see Lennar, some options from Lennar, on what might be done in other portions of the development to look at parks. And I do agree with Ben that then sometimes you don't have as much space for some of the other activities, but compared to the disadvantages that I see at where the proposed playground location is, I mean, my ask is to relook at the plat to see what other options there might be for the parkland. You know, a couple of other things just jumped out at me as I was reviewing the information that Ben talked about. There just, there seems to be some progress on concerns, but there seems to be a lot of open questions yet. There's collection, collecting of information, there's evaluation that yet needs to occur. And so again, my ask would be to vote no on the preliminary plat until some of those concerns can be addressed, such as the increase in the traffic. I know they're doing some traffic counts, and they're going to be looking at that information, but until that's collected and really understood, you know, I'd just like that to be a consideration for just knowing that we'll have children going to and from that school, and to and from, you know, any playground that might be in the area, that the traffic piece of it is quite concerning for us. And then I guess the other thing that jumped out to me and the value of the property is that there was mention of 11 lots, I think it was 11 lots anyway, that had some, they would be able to accommodate larger homes, and there'd be the opportunity to accommodate the larger homes, but I would guess it would still be up to Lennar if they take advantage of that opportunity. And to Linda's point again, too, it's still, even if there are a few lots that could accommodate the larger homes, you still are packing a lot of homes into quite a small area. Again, I don't want to go over a lot of the things that others have said, I'll try to stick to new items. So I think, I think that's really what I had, and again, I'm just asking, I don't think anyone's opposed to having houses built. I think we're just asking to have our concerns fully addressed and considered, and that the preliminary plat is voted no for now, and go back and take a look and look at some of the concerns and issues that we have.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hi, my name is Jim Tyler, 1640 Field Drive, and I just wanted to share something real quickly. Hopefully it'll have, give a little bit of insight, but I recently did a house hunting trip to the Chicago area, in the Naperville area, supposedly the 10th best place to live in the country. But you go through an interesting process when you're looking for a new home in a new community, and you tend to learn a lot more about where you are than where you're going to be, or in this case, probably not going to be. So the first, well, we're not going to go there. The first point I'd like to.
Welcome to Activ story.
Sort of, yeah. I really don't want to move. The one thing I noticed is, of course, these developments are all very planned, and they're thought out and that sort of thing. And when it comes to the playground, I noticed they're all connected to trails. It makes a lot of sense, whatever part of the development you live in, you want to be, you and your kids want to be able to get on a trail and make it to the park. And as much as I like displacement, because it's very close to my house and I've got two boys, I don't think it's really fair to the overall community. Obviously, you're asking people to cross major streets, you're asking them to, you know, battle over times and territory with, really, to me, it looks like a city park rather than a neighborhood park, the way it's lined up here, but I'd really encourage you to reconsider that. In fact, I thought maybe somewhere in this general area just seems to make sense, because it's centralized. Of course, there's probably more that goes to it than that, but the other thing I wanted to share is, I know there's a lot of development going on in Victoria, and so maybe there's just this overpowering, you know, push to build more houses. But when I came back, I found the one thing I was not able to find in this best community in America was the setting. Nowhere did I go was I able to look out and see rolling pastures, green trees, lakes. I really felt like I'm in a really nice place, and, you know, things are going to change and things are going to happen, and I just hope everybody takes the opportunity to put aside that pressure from the corporate, you know, housing world, and realize this is an opportunity to preserve something that's got value. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Kristin.
I'm Kristin Levin. I live at 1810 Carriage Drive, so directly across the street from the proposed development. Um, actually Jim, I didn't know that you were looking at Naperville. I moved here from Naperville and I wholly concur. I wouldn't move back there. Um, and when my, I dragged my husband up here, I grew up in Minnetonka and, uh, we started house hunting and there was absolutely a reason we moved here. And it's because of all of this gorgeousness and he is still blown away by just how beautiful Minnesota is. And he grew up in Southern California. He's not going back. So we love it here. We think it's just an absolute jewel and it's, you know, this is what we want to preserve here. And we do believe that this, uh, current plat is, is inadequate and isn't addressing everything that we feel really needs to be addressed. And there are a lot of questions in the air. So that's why we're asking that you vote no until these things are resolved. Um, I, I do concur with things that have already been said, but I'd also like to add, um, for instance, the additional trees that, uh, the planning commission voted that Lennar needed to put in along Carriage have now suddenly been called a buffer zone. We've been asking for a buffer zone all along, but there really isn't a change other than what the planning commission demanded. So what is this buffer? The, the lots haven't been changed, there's, there's just a few extra trees. That to me doesn't say buffer, that says, uh, we're going to throw in some trees and hope they shut up. And it's, it's just very upsetting, um, going back to the, the number of homes issue that's put in. Um, and I'm going to actually dovetail this in with the playground. So all the neighbors I've spoken to and believe me, I've spoken to many, many neighbors, can't believe that we're going to try and put playground on the additional, around the current, uh, park. Victoria's at its capacity, Victoria Elementary School, excuse me, is at its capacity. They're going to need to expand and then they're going to need more park, they're going to need more green space. We're going to add, for CC United is already the second largest soccer program in the state of Minnesota. Well, that's not getting any smaller. We're going to need more space for kids. We're going to put in a hundred more homes and we're suddenly going to need less green space for people. So that, that to me just doesn't make sense to put it there, although the location is great and I understand that it's already flat and level, so it would make it nice and easy to put it in. I just think that we're cannibalizing some very important usable space that, um, we're going to need for future uses. One proposed park location would be to put it in, uh, right along Carriage Drive there. So exact, across the street from myself, so right in this area here. If we can, you know, take some of those lots and shift them around and go ahead and put a park in there. Um, as has already been pointed out, lots that just back up to each other are some of the least desirable lots out there. So those are going to be, you know, the, the least desirable lots anyway. And if you take some of those out, you know, you could almost make this like a circle in here, a dead end. It also would alleviate some of the traffic, uh, issues. I know it's not taking out 10 lots, but, um, it's another area for a park that has some merit. I believe there would be enough room there to put fields, uh, you know, maybe a basketball court, some, you know, things that, so it's not just a tot lot, so that kids of all ages and in fact their parents can go and recreate there as well. Um, and touching based on the trail issue, um, they mentioned that Lennar removed the trail around the Eagles Nest, uh, as part of, uh, they're addressing our concerns. They haven't added it back in. So if we go and add that trail back into the trail in, uh, Outlet S, you know, that would kind of, you know, make up for them removing the trail around the Eagles Nest and still connect that through, but then we could still have that going through to a park there. I said, I, I know it's not ideal, but I think it's, um, a solution that, you know, could definitely, you know, we could use that as a buffer zone. You know, we could landscape that really well. Um, we could actually make a few of those lots more desirable than is currently proposed. Um, but I think I'm just going to go back to, I don't think the plat is finished. I think there's a lot of things that still, we still leave facts and, uh, we'd like to see those before we give this the rubber stamp and then Lennar goes through and then we don't hear anything else about it until it's done and we're angry and they're gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Hello, my name is Sammy Gabriel. I'm at 1776 Alphon. Um, one thing that we, there's been a lot of concern about and nobody's brought up yet tonight is the side facing lots. Um, it, I know Ben, you talked about there was, uh, the townhomes have side facing, but that is on the corner. And when we put these side facing lots on, you're going to see some really nice large homes and then sideways, even though there's this buffer zone, it's going to look really out of place. Um, you talked about having to put, the city may have to put service access areas for new driveways. I think that's something that has to be done. Those lots need to be turned so all the houses are facing Carriage Drive. Um, I, I think, you know, we've heard from lots of people, there's obviously more data that needs to be gathered. Um, we still see the traffic, um, the traffic, you know, clocking speeds, clocking number of cars. And like everybody else, I'm just imploring you to vote no tonight. Uh, still needs to be data gathered and information and I think everybody, we're excited that the housing market is coming back up, um, but we still need more, more time to get the right thing done here. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Rogers. I live at 1694 Alphon Drive. Uh, we're the second twin home in from the intersection of Carriage and Alphon. Um, I'll be brief, I'm not a public speaker. Um, we bought our house in 2006. The day that we closed on our house was a day somewhere like today. My wife and I went back to the house to take a look at it and we found water running into our basement, uh, in the sump pump, uh, so fast that the, um, that, uh, the sump pump barely turned off. Uh, we fought with Lennar for seven years, uh, did not get the problem resolved. We finally did last year, thanks to the help of Mayor O'Connor and, and Kara over here. Uh, they finally got our, our problem solved. Um, but we sit consistently, we're very much higher than the proposed area down there where this development is going in. Uh, I know when they were building the homes along Carriage, uh, right by the intersection of, of Carriage and Alphon, uh, those yards were, uh, unusable, the first, uh, the first year or so that they were there. We still have water issues up in the, up, up along Alphon Drive where we can't use the backyards because there's so much water there. Um, I just ask you before you vote on this, that you make sure, if you're going to build that development, that the proper drainage is done down there because you may find yourself with a major problem in dealing with Alph, or dealing with Lennar and getting into any inner water, uh, any water drainage issues, uh, taken care of once those zones are built.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, I'm Leigh Linus. I live at 1705 Martingale Lane. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here in large part because my children asked me to attend. Um, they understand that democracy involves participation of the people and also realize that citizens must speak out for things which matter to them. So I'm here to speak for them and to support the many residents who, over this process, have spoken at previous meetings and emailed, raising concerns over this development. I'm also here to request a renewed effort on the part of the council to work toward not only building new subdivisions, but to building a community in Victoria. And lastly, I am here to advocate on behalf of the land and the wildlife that will be adversely affected and which has no voice of its own. Our family has lived in Victoria for nearly four years. We looked for homes around the western suburbs and chose Victoria because we were attracted to the country feel. We have enjoyed the small town and the open spaces, but those spaces are disappearing and I am increasingly concerned about the development, not just, um, in Lake Town, but throughout Victoria. All around the city, groves of trees are being cut, grassy native prairies of wildflowers are being bulldozed and wildlife habitat is disappearing. The face of Victoria is changing and the face of the future is a giant subdivision of tract homes. It seems that the qualities that really make Victoria special and unique will all be developed away. Many people I know are concerned about the long-term integrity of the city and question whether people will drive the extra distance and pay the higher taxes to live in a place that looks like every other sprawling subdivision in the metro. They can get that less expensively elsewhere. What makes Victoria special should be guarded and preserved and developed cautiously. So I'd urge the council to truly listen to and then act on the concerns of the residents, not just in the case of Lake Town, but the vision of the city in general. At a previous meeting, Mr. Jablonsky stated that he is in attendance at these meetings to represent the shareholders of Lennar. And I understand his economic position and I appreciate his honesty. City leaders, on the other hand, are elected and hired to represent the taxpayers of Victoria. We are the ones who support the businesses here and who are paying the taxes, which I might add are pretty high. The residents themselves are the essence of this community and should be highly valued by city leadership. The residents and not outside developers should be guiding the vision of the development of our community. A recent email sent by the mayor and the council stated that is the position of the council that only a few people are really exposed, uh, opposed to the expansion of Lake Town. I would offer that conversely, many people simply feel disenfranchised from the process. Many residents are opposed, if not to the development entirely, to many aspects of the development and yet feel powerless to change. I have been told by many neighbors that coming to these meetings is a waste of time because the development will happen no matter what. Builders get what they want and residents just have to pay the additional costs that will come from the new wells, the new sewers and the new schools. They tell me meetings happen and people speak, but little changes, so why go? But I'm here anyway. Many residents came to the first meeting where this chamber was standing room only and were told for the sake of expediency that only two residents would be allowed to speak that day. And this is an example of why people feel shut out. However, I appreciate your offer of expanded forum tonight. At the commissioner's meeting, one commissioner stated that as part of their mission is to build community and I hope that is also the intent of this council because right now in Victoria, there is an undercurrent of division and bad feelings. We have council members and the mayor in the midst of a lawsuit. We have residents calling for the resignation of the mayor and we have a reopened grocery store that is being picketed. Regarding Lake Town, we have residents who have come to the meetings to express the concerns, as we've heard tonight, about the size and the price point not being consistent with what was originally intended and are concerned about the economic impact to the biggest investment that they have. We personally know several families who have moved out of Victoria because of this expansion and proposed expansion and because they feel disregarded by the council. That is not community. In addition to the impact to the resale value of our neighborhood, I am largely concerned about the impact to the environment. At an earlier meeting, I asked whether an environmental assessment worksheet had been prepared for this phase of the development and I was told that it did not meet the criteria for an EAW. However, my reading of Minnesota Administrative Rule 4410-4300 indicates otherwise. And it is my understanding that an EAW is required for the project in total, which means all adjacent lands owned by the developer and not just this current phase. So I would request, um, investigation into that rule prior to zoning approval. Um, Lennar has stated that it will remove 174 trees, um, but I believe there are actually many more than that in the proposed roadway to Wasserman. And to take down hundreds of 75 foot trees and replace them with nine foot saplings is again changing the face of Victoria for the worst. Furthermore, while protection of the wetland is good and frankly only done because it is required by law, the protection of adjacent lands is also important. This area is a really special part of Victoria. Currently there are nesting sandhill cranes out there. There are the bald eagles. There are red-tailed hawks which have abandoned their nest because of the development of eighth. Um, this area is part of the Mississippi Flyway, which is a migratory pathway for thousands of birds. Dozens and dozens of different species migrate through this area every spring and fall and many birds make their summer residence there. And if the trees and the dry lands near the wetland disappear, so will all those birds and all those animals, too numerous to mention in this statement. You cannot just save the water and 10 feet of shore. Furthermore, this area is also home to many migratory monarch butterflies. And I don't know if any of you have children and were able to go to the Science Museum for their special exhibit last year, but migratory monarchs are in great peril. And Minnesota has a very special and unique, um, place in monarch migration because we host super monarchs. They are the butterflies that go all the way back 4,000 miles to Mexico. So as they go, the entire species of butterfly will go. I find it sadly ironic that just a few minutes away at the Lowry Nature Center, where children, including my own, go there to learn about the environment and the importance of protecting it, we here are busy bulldozing it away. Finally, Victoria is a very special place, very, very special place. It's beautiful here. It's got tracts of woodlands and grasslands and increasingly rare animal species in Minnesota. I have fallen in love with this place since we moved here. It is too special to be clear cut and bulldozed flat and built up with homes. We can do better. Development can happen with a more sensitive vision to the environment and a more sensitive ear to the residents that live here. We have just one opportunity to develop land and we as a city need to look at the long-term integrity of what the residents hope that this city will become. We need to work harder, not just at holding meetings, but in moving directions that actually build community in Victoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We got time. Well, seeing none, I'll, I'll close the public hearing. Um, Ben, how do you want to proceed here? You, did you get a laundry list of what some of the complaints, the concerns are?
I wrote down what they are, sure.
Hey, and for the benefit of the council, you want to address those and then we can have a conversation about the impacts?
Okay. So we had a question from the resident 1850 Carriage about, um, water in the backyard and how that was, would be addressed. I don't know, Kara, if you want to probably outline what's being done, if you need a grading plan, I can pull one up.
Oh, that's okay. And I, I think maybe I'll expand that slightly to talk about drainage for the whole area. So, um, specifically, there was talk in this general area. So I have taken a look at the proposed grading plan and there is proposed grading in the location this, of these lots that, um, creates a swale for directing some of this flow down towards the wetland. Um, I will just add that I'm very familiar with Mr. Rogers' experience for, um, his property and other issues that were raised with drainage in, um, the previous phases of the development. So taking a very close look at the proposed grading, when we get to the stage of reviewing final construction plans will be something I will be taking a very close look at. I don't expect the soils in this section to be any different in this, than the soils in the adjacent section. So, um, we'll be looking at some of those things like proposed minimum slopes in rear yards, um, where the storm sewer po, pipes are going to be located and, um, looking pretty closely at that drainage. We do that on every plat, but certainly given the soil conditions that we encountered in the adjacent area, that's something we'll be looking at very closely during the development of final construction plans where they start to dive into more detail related to that.
May I ask a question, Kara?
Sure.
Kara, um, in your opinion and experience, um, are any of the drainage issues that occurred in the previous additions, um, are they due to unknown soil conditions or construction faults or what were, what were the cause of those?
Um, throughout the city of Victoria, the experience that some of those neighbors have occurred where sump pumps run continuously is a common problem throughout our soils. So I like to reference our building official. Um, he lives in town and his sump pump runs continuously and he has battery backup. He lives in town and his sump pump runs continuously, and he has battery backup and a second pump in place for addressing those situations. What I really want to hone in and looking at is minimum slopes and what those rear yard swales look like. Those tend to be problem areas. We have heavy clay soils that have sand lenses that once they're encountered as part of construction, sometimes what's happening from a groundwater flow perspective changes. So that's the reason why all of our homes typically have sump pumps in them. It's the reason why the city requires the construction of a drain tile system in the street. That's not typical for cities, but those drain tile systems are put in place and connections are provided so that everybody's sump pump water can go to the storm sewer system instead of just recirculating back into their yard. So we do a lot already with our standards to have those things addressed, but certainly we're taking a much closer look at things like rear yard swales and flatter areas to make sure that the water is adequately moving away from the basements.
Thank you. Do you feel the water is, this plan moves the water away from the?
Yeah, we did have a preliminary grading plan that we reviewed as part of the preliminary plat application, and I didn't have any major concerns with their proposed grading. The design engineer also received a lot of phone calls from the city in addressing the issues on the first phase, so he's evolved in his design of developments in heavy clay soils also to make sure that those things don't happen again. So we're working closely together. People's sump pumps will still run in these new houses, and some of them will run continuously. That happens everywhere in Victoria.
So Kara, can I ask, I know residents had noted that these new areas are much lower than some that are higher and they have issues. Is that because we haven't started to develop this land yet? Is that something you'll see a difference in as they continue to develop that area once they start?
You know, I was looking at the proposed elevations for the new phase. I wasn't going back and comparing them, so I'm sure they know which way is downhill from where they're currently sitting. Again, it's really about just making sure that the water is being moved away from foundations in an appropriate manner. So we have design guidelines in place that they're required to meet, that we work through that with.
Ben?
Or I completely take it back? Do you want to, there were some things on traffic. If you want to tackle more the auto thing and I can tackle.
Sure.
Trails.
So related to traffic, Red Fox Drive is a proposed collector. At one of our neighborhood meetings, we spent a lot of time talking about what that means. But Red Fox Drive will eventually continue to Marsh Lake Road. In our comprehensive plan, Red Fox Drive continues south of Marsh Lake Road all the way to County Road 10. So it is designed to accommodate traffic. That proposed traffic was known at the time Red Fox was constructed, so things like access spacing guidelines, curvature, both horizontal and vertical curves of the road were reviewed as part of that initial construction. So that road itself is intended to have a fair amount of traffic on it. But what we did decide to do was that we really did need to start developing some baseline information about what's happening out there. So we've started doing traffic counts so that as development occurs, we can start to see how the traffic patterns increase, to see whether it's not consistent with what we were anticipating when the road was designed. We're also taking a look at speeds. We have gotten complaints about people speeding on Red Fox Drive, so we did move our speed trailer out there recently so we can start collecting data. That speed trailer provides feedback to drivers, but it also is collecting information as to how fast traffic is moving. So that's data that we're starting to review and monitor. But as it stands today, I don't have any specific concerns with Red Fox. We do hear a lot of concerns about Victoria Drive and Red Fox. Victoria Drive is a county road. Those concerns that had been previously raised did result in the county including a turn lane construction in their overlay project that was completed last year. The county will continue to monitor that intersection someday. I have no idea when. It will likely meet warrants for some sort of increased traffic control at that intersection, but that will, three of the legs are county roads. This is a county road as well, so they tend to lead that. In terms of, I certainly, from a traffic perspective, if I only wore a traffic engineering hat, having a connection like this here and having a connection through here to distribute these cars onto multiple different routes is generally something that, from a traffic perspective, we prefer. But when it comes at the cost of some pretty significant wetland impacts, then I have to put on my stormwater management engineer hat and take a look at balancing the impacts of those two. The traffic coming out to Carriage Drive isn't inconsistent with other streets in the community that have a significant amount of lots abutting a residential street. This new Lakeside Drive, all the way through the new properties to the west, all have, will have a lot of traffic on it from the adjacent properties. Woodstone Drive is another example that comes to mind in the existing Deer Run neighborhood. All of Ridge Ponds and all of those cul-de-sacs all come out to Woodstone Drive. There's a lot of traffic on that road. Speeds tend to be things we get called about, so that's typically something that we're monitoring and taking a look at. But the road certainly can handle that volume of traffic. It would have been nice to put the roads through, but I, they would have had a hard time even getting permitting and approval to make these connections by having to impact more wetlands. Is that everything?
Yeah, I think so. So one of the things that was brought up, I guess I'll talk a little bit about schools and park issues. So one of the residents had talked about future expansion of the elementary school that's going for bond referendum and kind of impacts, what does that mean related to kind of that playground and maybe that park space? Should we be taking more park space? As we understand it today, if the bond referendum were to move forward and in addition be added to Victoria Elementary School, this, of course, I would lose my mouse, this area here is where that expansion would take place because that's within the property that they own and control, excuse me. As far as the usable space and why this location is being targeted, this dot is probably not perfectly representative of the space that is being looked at. There's a multipurpose field that kind of runs rectangular through this space here, and there's kind of a gap between the edge of this ball field and that space that does have quite a bit of area to it. And with playground structures, you could certainly have kind of a longer, more linear playset that can go into that space, something we're still going to evaluate as we move through that process. With the dedication of Outlet A, which is the majority of the area in here, there still could be other opportunities within this space that aren't on Outlet S that the city could look at putting playground equipment. The hard part for the property, if I was to pull out a grading plan to try to look at, can we take that 2.2 acres now within another part of the development? It does just get challenging from a topographical standpoint. We have a lot of sloping going on, so even the idea of putting a park here, certainly I understand that, but most of these lots are designed to be lookout or walkout. So if that park was to tie in with wherever that the ultimate lot lines end up being, you end up with slope space for the park. Now, it doesn't mean every park has to have a playset in it or that they all have to be for certain types of activities. It's just not an ideal location at this point. When we had a discussion with several residents about the playground going in Outlet S, not only was there a discussion about just not having that activity in their backyard, but there's close proximity to having a park here in the townhome, which is private park area, but also what's just off of this map, the park at Deer Run 2 being just down the street. I'm not sure that another location here helps solve the issue of providing park space because we're still in close proximity to other areas. But I do think we've talked internally about there are other opportunities should the playground site here not work out that would still be off of trails and may not require crossing some of these major roadways. I would say to the one resident's point, certainly valid, about wanting to get to a park via trails, this location does lend itself that way, and we do have designated trail crossings. Those could be enhanced some as development starts to build out and traffic would grow. So there are multiple options to still make it work and good access to everyone. Did I lose monitors?
We're okay now.
Just blink a little bit.
Okay.
Sure.
Hope it wasn't me. The comments about the environment certainly noted. I tried to explain as best I could that for what they have to deal with, they're really limiting their impacts on the environment. One of the things on this graphic that I guess I would just point out, not the entire area that doesn't encompass some of the lots, but these hatched spaces are wetland buffers. So they're existing areas that really used to filter that water before it goes in. It's not part of the wetland today. This is basically a Minnehaha Creek policy that they're trying to follow where they basically average that space from the wetlands. But they're trying to provide kind of that sensitive treatment for that wetland and not trying to impact it as best as possible. There are a lot of comments brought up about kind of what is gained by the proposal. Is this the right solution or the right layout? I don't know that there's a perfect answer to that because everyone could have a different opinion today, so that may be something that the council wants to discuss a little bit further. I don't certainly have an answer to that. Those seem to be the biggest themes that I put up from the quick notes that I was taking and the side-facing homes, I guess, being another one. Other than to say, I think we have looked at it at this point, that's, we don't dictate the way a house is oriented by any of our codes, so it would be something that the developer could certainly volunteer, but I don't know what we have to force that issue.
Bonnie?
Ben, can you talk to the EA, our last, one of our last speakers spoke to the EAW piece?
Do you know more about that than me, probably?
I suspected you maybe have less experience with that since you're newer to the city, and I'm looking at the city attorney to speak to the specific references she made, but I will just remind the city council, because I'm sure you don't remember, from 2003, the city did, in conjunction with all of the landowners, south of Lake Wasserman and adjacent to, like where the Rhapsody neighborhood is, participated in the development of an A U A R, which is an alternative, stands for something, alternative.
Area-wide utility.
Review. It's really an alternative environmental assessment process to an EAW. It's a little bit, it typically will cover a broader land area, so since the city knew they were going to have so much land coming in for development, participated in that process with the landowners. All of that information that was generated from that study was then subsequently incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan update. So that study looked at things like transportation, sewer extension, water extension, environmental impacts, wetland protection, all, it covers a wide area of topics. And then I'm going to see if the city attorney wants to add it.
Well, mayor and council, there is a rule, a state regulation that applies, and I suspect your resident cited it correctly, that sets out criteria, relatively specific thresholds for developments or physical improvements to land that require an environmental review, environmental assessment worksheet, EAW. I didn't know this was an issue, so I didn't actually reacquaint myself verbatim with the rule tonight, but that is something legitimately to be taken a look at. And then mayor, if I can just keep going, my thought that I wanted to add, I'm not sure it's apropos of the EAW issue specifically, but let me just take 30 seconds to talk about it. A number of your residents, I think fairly, had questions or raised issues that they feel haven't been fully addressed. I would simply point out, and Ben, of course, can jump in on this as well, we are at the preliminary plats, take a step back, we are at several approvals that are in front of you. One of them is a preliminary plat request, the others being, as you know, a request to rezone the property, the third being a conditional use permit which would reset the standards for development through a PUD, planned unit development. You have all three of those issues in front of you tonight. And with respect to the preliminary plat, one of the issues in front of you, it is preliminary because it is the approval step before final plat approval comes forward. It is always the case at preliminary approval of a plat that there are some number of issues unresolved, and you have the authority under your code and under state law to impose conditions to address those kind of unresolved issues. So I'm certainly not advocating for or against you having enough information tonight to act, but understand as a matter of process, the process contemplates that you aren't going to have every question answered at the point that a preliminary plat comes forward.
And a vote, if it were to happen, to approve the preliminary plat, that's not the final answer then?
So mayor and council, that's right. The point, and I'm summarizing greatly, the point of the preliminary plat and then final plat approval process is that cities in the preliminary phase have the ability to impose conditions. Of course, conditions is the lawyer's way of saying changes. You can require changes to the proposed plat at the preliminary stage. The final plat then can't come forward unless and until the developer has addressed the conditions, has made the changes, again, to speak more simply, has made the changes that you would require as part of the preliminary plat process. Now, again, whether you are prepared to list out the conditions you would want to propose or require at this point, I guess that's something that you'll have to decide through discussion, but that is what the process contemplates, is that you could impose conditions, require changes, in other words, before a final plat could come forward.
We may as well get it out on the table. We're at the case that we would vote against this. Vote, just vote, vote no. What ramifications from a legal perspective are there? Because it's my understanding that the developer and the city have worked together to the point where the developer has complied totally with our zoning code.
Well, mayor and council, I don't want to dodge that question. I guess I don't, if you mean literally tonight, vote to deny all three of the action items in front of you, I guess I would probably counsel you to send that back to staff to bring something back to you with reasons, rationale for that kind of an action. I would hesitate to have you go forward with respect to all three of these requests and actually vote, if it were the will of the group, to deny without having in front of you some staff thought through reasons for that. So I guess I would make that caution for a second. I was very impressed with the degree to which Ben's listing of issues, he categorized the issues in the memo that you have and the folks in the room have. It sounded to me like most of the concerns raised fell into these categories. So I think, mayor, the way I would recast your question is, do these categories of concerns, are these categories of concerns legitimate concerns? Are they things that you can consider in voting for or against these actions? And the answer is yes. Quite clearly, the criteria, at least for, again, three items, one of the items, the planned unit development approval, you've got in your code very specific criteria, and let me just recite a couple of them to give you a flavor for them. Compatibility of the proposed PUD plan with the goals and policies of your COT plan, the effect of the proposed plan on the neighborhood in which it's to be located, internal organization and adequacy of various uses or densities, circulation, parking facilities, public facilities, recreation areas, open spaces, screening and landscaping, another criteria, consistency with the performance standards of the chapter, and such other factors as the planning commissioner of the city council deem relevant. So your code contemplates considering the kinds of issues that have been brought to your attention through a number of public hearings and through your staff. So I don't know that that's, that may be a non-answer answer, but mayor, I guess I would caution you against taking a final action tonight, and maybe, I'm blathering on here, mayor and council, sorry. Ben could probably inform us about the timelines that you're under for action, and it's a little confusing, and let's be clear about this, the timelines for action, because we have three different requests in front of you, are a little bit different. The result- The rezoning request and the preliminary plat request are both subject to what you know as the 60-day rule. Minnesota statute's 1599, that gives you 60 days from receipt of those requests to take action unless you, the city, extend it an additional, up to 60 days. You have up to 120 days to take action on those two requests. And then conveniently enough, the request to, and I'm sorry, I misspoke there, the PUD request and the rezoning request are subject to the 60-day rule. The preliminary plat approval is separate, separately subject to a timeline, and that timeline is conveniently 120 days. So ultimately, the timeline are, the timelines line up, but Ben can speak to us, I think, about when those requests came in and where we are in those time periods.
Yes, if I would have written them down verbatim, I would be able to recite that exactly. Other than to say, we put up the timeline for taking the preliminary plat, PUD rezoning application through to stay within that 60-day rule. I know that we maybe are within 10 days of being towards the tail end, this being the second reading of the zoning change. So we are close. To give you an exact measurement, I'd have to...
That affects only the zoning question? It doesn't affect the?
You can't move forward the preliminary plat without having zoning in place, and the PUD is also tied into what's being proposed. So in a sense, if you were delaying any approvals, you're delaying all.
Which is positive situation. If we were to approve Resolution 1535, approving, that's the wrong one.
1534.
The zoning.
That was my question, is, are they so interrelated that we could not go forward tonight with the zoning and delay the other two?
The zoning portion primarily deal, it doesn't deal with numbers of lots, it doesn't deal with utilities. It's strictly kind of the nuts and bolts of that.
Moving ag to residential.
Correct.
And then the issues that you summarized relate both to the preliminary plat and the PUD, is that correct?
On some levels, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Mayor and Council, if I can just reiterate what Ben is saying, sort of from legal department on this side of the table, that's right. I agree with what your planner is saying. To the extent you're concerned that you have three dominoes lined up, and if you approve one, all three fall, that's not right. The rezoning stands separate. Rezoning, I think the primary issue there is whether you believe the proposed rezoning is consistent with your comprehensive plan.
Right.
And consistent with your views about future development of this property. If it is, if the rezoning that's proposed is consistent with your comp plan and your view and your future beliefs about development, then moving forward, approving the rezoning does not presuppose approval of this particular preliminary plat or the PUD. In other words, again, I spoke a lot like a lawyer there, to make it simpler, you could approve the rezoning without necessarily acting on or approving the other two items.
And if, just to take it one step further, if we were to approve the preliminary plat, that's not the final answer, that we could approve the preliminary plat with the direction that the developer and staff work out, one, two, six issues?
Mayor and Council, you could do that, but to be very clear, if you approve a preliminary plat, you must identify the conditions or the changes that you're requiring the developer to make. You can't simply say, we're approving, subject to hoping the final plat is better.
Can I fold an idea?
That.
Please.
Okay. And I'm going to need some assistance from staff as to what numbers go where, but my initial reaction is to approve the zoning and table the PUD and...
The plat.
Plat, excuse me, preliminary plat. No, it, four years ago, I was coached that if a preliminary plat comes through and is approved, unless there are any changes, is expected to be approved in final plat form. So I'm hesitant to approve the preliminary plat, there's a lot of Ps in that, at this time. That being said, that's a proposal I'll put on the table, and I would sponsor a motion to approve the zoning and go forward, but before we discuss the other two items, I've got a whole bunch of things to talk about.
Let me make sure I understand, and I think I agree with you, approve the zoning ordinance, that's adopt ordinance, that's number 390, and the PUD?
No, just 390.
Split it off, that first agenda statement, split it into two pieces.
And I'll turn that into a motion. I move we adopt ordinance number 390 as listed here.
Period.
Period.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Question.
Joe?
So, Ben, if we approve this, locations of roads, stormwater management, house sizes, lots.
That's not part of zoning.
Nothing. All this is, is saying that we are.
Allowing for a single-family residential to occur according to the bulk regulations that are called out in that ordinance.
And nothing else.
It's no longer agriculture, it's now residential.
So they'll be now taxed on residential and not agricultural.
I don't know the ins and outs. I don't know that the county taxes based on zoning, it's typically based on use. So I would wager that if we zoned it and nothing occurred on the property, they'd still be taxed based upon an agricultural use or whatever it's currently being taxed as.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we want this to be residential, it's what that looks like, and I'm not going to vote against going from agricultural to residential, but I have a lot of questions.
There's a motion on the floor with a second to approve the, adopt ordinance 390, amending section 30 by rezoning property from Lake Town 9th Edition from agriculture to residential, period. And there's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we've approved the rezoning.
So regarding the final two items, this may come across as kind of rambling because there's a whole bunch of different topics here, so I'll just jump from one topic to I've been a resident of Victoria since 2006, and I'm a resident of Lake Town. The one consistent thing that has occurred from that timeframe to today is change. Everything about the real estate market has changed since that timeframe. The definition of a premium house is no longer the same as it was when I moved there, or when all of us moved there. The value of my house is $110,000 less than it was when I purchased it. Thankfully, I don't have to realize that loss until I actually sell it. That's the only positive thing I can say about it at this point in time. If I was to have to sell it, I would be at a loss. That being said, I believe there's validity in a number of these topics, and I tried to go through and do some research as to how we've handled these things in the past. And I'm glad the comment came up earlier about, you know, what does the code say? As council, we're guided by the code. It's really, it's, from a principle standpoint, if they're meeting code and the items are preference, it's hard to say no to that because it's not our preference or not our desire to state what a business owner or a homeowner should do from a preference standpoint. My personal belief is government shouldn't be doing that, we should be getting out of the way for the experts. That being said, I'm going to dive into a bunch of these things here. On the issue of carriage drive homes and the orientation of the homes, first thing I tried to do is gather the facts, right? So what happens in the city of Victoria today that could give us direction as to what we should do with these homes? So going to the Carver County GIS system, I tried to identify within the city of Victoria what I will call examples of side street orientation, where the houses are as they are designed here, and main street orientation, where they're oriented towards what this would be carriage drive. And I will admit, this is not a statistically valid survey or summary, but in the hour and a half I went through the GIS, I can count 18 instances of side street orientation in Victoria and 10 instances of main street orientation. So one tells me, or that tells me that it's actually more likely to have a side street orientation than it is to have main street, but that's not the only factor. That's a data point. So looking at a number of other topics that we have been presented as council, greater density leads to more ordered development. This is greater density than what we have in Lake Town today. We are being guided as a city by the Met Council to be more ordered and more dense. In fact, there are ramifications that if we do not pursue more dense, it can affect our budget detrimentally. We have to raise taxes if those funds don't come in. That's a bad thing, we don't like to do that. Chaska is more dense, therefore more ordered, with more side street orientations. Side street orientation seems to be aligned with more dense associations or developments. We like it here in Victoria because it's not dense, that's why we moved here, that's why I moved here. Orientation in this case, as a design, was approved before I moved to Victoria, before I moved to Victoria, and this was a known entity, actually, when I moved in. This design is unchanged in terms of the orientation of the homes from when the original development was presented to the city in 2003, so this is not new news. What has changed, however, are the style of homes. More dense is more popular today than 2006 and earlier. As I said earlier, it's also a requirement of the Met Council to move more dense. The issue at hand is aesthetics, not policy. However, Lennar's approach, in my opinion, does lead towards a density discussion. Earlier tonight, we approved the liquor license extension for Inky Brewery, and I look at the orientation of the homes as a preference issue. My only thought is that this is similar to Inky in saying that, you know, I like lagers and not ale, therefore I'm not going to approve your liquor license because you should be presenting lagers to the customer. And that's not what we do as a government. That is something that the business owners should pursue with their customers, and in this case, for the orientation of those homes, my belief is Lennar should be working with the homeowners more closely and listening more closely to come up with an orientation that's acceptable both to their business plan as well as to the existing community. So in summary on this subject, my advice and direction is to find middle ground and listen, Lennar, listen to your existing customers. The houses don't all face the side streets, they don't all face carriage drive. There are examples of this all over the city now, where they switch up the orientation, it's more random, it actually looks better. There are examples where they're oriented at an angle, which I have a question, is why can't we do that? And would that cause extra cost in terms of having to tear out utilities just to turn the house a little bit and present to both sides? Now, that's not my recommendation, I'm saying, look around. So these are my opinions. It's also my opinion that a good corporate citizen, Lennar, will listen to their constituents and respond in a way that promotes the business that's best in the community. So that's part of my advice and my reasoning for delaying this. If we look at other topics, let's talk about the park. My greatest concern about, well, let me step back. From a park standpoint, I was promised a park when I bought my house in 2006. I'm still looking for a Lake Town park. We don't have a park. We have a school. It's not a park. End of discussion on whether we have a park or not. Now, if we look at the proposal of putting the park into the location identified, and I thank staff for pulling out the agreement with ISD 112, if I look at section 4.2 of the park facility, and I discovered this originally when I was on the Rec Recreation Committee, I'm not going to use the term Rec, Recreation Committee four years ago, and why can't we use the park? And I asked one of the teachers, because this is a school issue and we can't be out here liable for your kids when they're playing. So section 4.2, 4.2.1, the city and its park department shall be entitled to priority use of the park facilities and related recreational equipment. Skip down a little bit, except that ISD 112 will have priority, partial if necessary as determined by the city, use of all fields and related recreational facilities year-round from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on weekdays. So we have priority except 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on all weekdays. Section 4.2.2, the school or scheduled sponsored program shall be entitled to second priority at times in the park facility other than described above. 4.2.3, community groups and neighborhood residents and other scheduled activities shall be the third priority. And 4.2.4, unscheduled public use shall be the fourth priority. This is completely backwards for a park. And my concern is, if you look at how this is worded today, I am not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV, but I do have a lot of experience in trying to describe business terms with legal representatives to make sure we get the legalese correct. As I read this today, if we put that park equipment in as identified there, it will follow this priority use and the school will take priority over it. So if we put it there, this agreement has to change. If the agreement stays, we have to find a new location for the park. My opinion. What else?
Can we just verify that with Ann Monkey?
I think it's an attorney discussion.
Okay, because I think this is outside of the school property proper, right? And the current playground is located?
Inside.
Inside.
But if you read the language, it says the city and its park department shall be entitled to the use of park facilities.
So you're reading as whatever gets in there is going to fall into this agreement?
The park, and then specifically regarding the park facility, the school has priority.
Got it, I see how you're reading.
That's the issue.
I guess a definition on that, but I actually was thinking about it more, maybe as Lonnie was, that if, and I understand this may be an indemnification issue about safety, whether you put a fence or in some other way delineate it, the dot that's indicated here for a park is not part of the school property, and in the same manner that I would expect if the residents are prohibited from going on school property, the school would be prohibited from using the park to prevent that same liability.
There's one thing that I can, there's one thing I'm absolutely sure of. Whatever we decide on tonight will be wrong unless we engage the school district and have a joint discussion.
And I would.
Has to be a joint discussion.
I think we have to have a joint discussion. I know our understanding at the Park and Rec Committee, that's where I am right now too, is, you know, part of the reason we selected that area was location, centrality to the newer homes, and again, this whole area that I'm motioning, sorry, to the circles around the school, that don't have a park, and it was an alternative to the ones behind the carriage drive houses who don't want anything there. And so we looked at that as, you know, wow, you could be near these playfields, you could do this and so on, and it is outside of the school property. But to your point, regardless, we need to have that discussion.
It needs to be clarified.
I'm not upset or disappointed with the location. My concern is the wording in the contract.
Correct.
May not, may preclude the use of that location.
We cannot have a repeat of what we have today.
Today, right.
That is a letdown.
Understand that Lennar folks would like to speak, and we would like to hear what you have to say. You've been listening politely all night.
As Joe's coming up, can I just point out one thing to think about related to the playground location? Just keep in mind, Lennar's not dedicating playground as their parkland dedication. The park, the playground location is different than their dedication.
Correct.
Yep. Understood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joe Jablonski, here this evening representing Lennar. Also with me, Mr. Paul Tabon, my associate. He may be able to answer some of the specifics if it gets into some of the nitty-gritty details and things. First, I wanted to take a minute just to thank staff and council and the neighborhood residents. It has been a very active process. We've had the concept plan review that went to planning commission and council. We've held two neighborhood meetings. We have had, staff has had follow-up neighborhood meetings, both looking at the park locations and I think a separate one even outside of that. So I really want to commend your staff. They do a great job and they're very thorough on communicating with the residents and things. It's difficult to hear some of the concerns and that of the process and of the lack of understanding and that because it has been a pretty open dialogue between residents as far as the communication and does it always mean? And does it always mean that we're going to do everything everyone asks of us? Probably not. Some of that is business-related. But we have taken a number of the issues into consideration. And I do want to point out that, you know, we do hear the concerns of the residents. We have made adjustments in some of the plans and have done things related to being not only environmentally conscious, but also trying to protect the values and trying to protect what has already occurred in the neighborhood. Some of the things that are driving, the driving forces behind what is occurring here, I think, is a lot of the concern relates to the value of property, to the value of the neighborhood, to the original design or the original intent. And as you look at, at the site plan that's up on the map, I think that Councilmember Crowley pointed out very clearly that this is in very close relation to what was originally represented to the, to all the customers who purchased in Lake Town. It's very, very similar in layout. The side orientation has always been presented. It is something that, you know, we were willing to supplement with additional buffering and additional screening or call it what you want, but add landscape. From our perspective, with the views that you would have from the second stories of the Carriage Drive homes that are existing, some of the second-story views going down the open corridors are more open and longer than they would be with homes across. I think there's also a concern from your city engineer and public works department about the integrity of the road. If you have to tear it up and attempt to rebuild it, that you lose some of the longevity and long-term use of the road. And I'll let the city engineer add to that if she feels necessary. But the rest of the layout, especially through this piece and down through here, it really echoes the rest of the neighborhood. You know, we've went out and attempted to acquire more property to help alleviate what we felt was maybe not a great design of a straight-through shot road that connected Wasserman Woods to Red Fox. By putting the bend and the curve in it, it helps alleviate potentially some of the speeding traffic and the connections in the neighborhood. And I think that, you know, at the end of the day, is it everything everybody wanted? You know, maybe not. But it is, as also mentioned tonight, it is within the realms of your code. We have met all the code requirements. We are being sensitive to all the environmental concerns as far as the wetlands. The impacts on the land have been minimized as much as possible. So, and the park, you know, we've heard a lot of concern and a lot of discussion about the park. You know, we're willing to do what we're required of related to the park, and that is to dedicate two acres or cash. A two-acre park, I don't believe really fits into the city's park requirements or, you know, what you're really looking for, for neighborhood-type parks. And that's why I think staff and the Parks Department or Park and Rec Committee have been working really closely to try to identify where the appropriate location for that is. I just wanted to point out or kind of make that clear, that it's not Lennar that's driving where the park is going. We're just trying to cooperate in that process. You know, we've, with the dedication of the school area, we've met a good majority of our requirements for dedication on this whole Lake Town site, the whole 345 acres. So, I just wanted to make sure, because I know that's been another topic that's been discussed quite a bit. The style of houses and orientation, yeah, it's very, very true that the style and the types of homes have changed. What we haven't changed or what we will not change is the consistency with the materials, consistency with the high-quality elevations, consistency with brick, stone, all the stuff that you see on the existing residents. Are the types of homes and the square footages and the exact floor plans different? Yes, they are. They are different. And some of that's market-driven, some of that's driven to the fact that building codes have changed. It's much more difficult for us to build homes as big as the ones that, some of the ones that are in Lake Town now, because anything over 4,500 square feet with included floor space requires sprinkler systems. That causes a much different type of situation when you're trying to build and sell new homes. So, excuse me, and I wanted to, you know, just come up here and make sure that you knew that we were here and engage in you so that if you had questions that we could answer specifically, that, you know, we really want to see this move along tonight. I'd really like to work through any questions or concerns that you have. Maybe we can do it either with conditions, but, you know, we're on also a schedule related to, you know, we want to see this moved in the next phase so that we can get going on construction. Our construction season is only so long. And if we talk about the changes that you would like to see tonight, maybe we can address them, maybe we can't, but I don't know. We're not going to start over and recreate the plan between now and two weeks from now.
And I'll speak for myself. I'm not suggesting that you redo the plan from scratch. I want to compliment Lennar because of the processes that I have been through with different builders. This has probably been one of the most extensive ones in terms of negotiations. And I'll compliment staff again because of the process that they have facilitated. And you've been working very diligently with them, and thank you for doing that. I'm asking you to work just a little bit more.
Yeah, let's, let me talk about specifics. It seems to me, as I sit here, listen, there are preferences galore as to side yards or where the trail is. The one burning issue, the one unknown really, is the park, to me. Again, I think you have complied, we have a zoning code, you've complied with it. Over five months, you've worked with the residents. You're probably sitting there thinking, geez, I'm doing the best I can and I'm not getting anywhere. Well, you're getting somewhere. It's just we got, we got a couple more, I think, just a couple more issues to resolve. And I don't know how people feel about it, but again, I'd posit that the real issue that comes down to, other than preferences, which Jim pointed out, 18 and 10, I mean, I think I don't doubt the sincerity of the views that have been expressed, but I do think it amounts to preference and we could agree perhaps to disagree. How about people feel if the intent with the preliminary plat, with the exception of the whole question of the park?
No.
Joe doesn't feel that way. I didn't make...
I got, well, I have questions for Lennar, and I have a whole bunch to go through, I guess, before...
Let me just make the motion and see if anybody agrees and if we, what the next step would be.
The reason I phrase it the other way, and this comes back to, I think, some of your comments, Joe. If we were against this, I would have, I would have made a motion to vote no. And I didn't do that. And I'm making a motion to table this to address some concerns. I have to be truthful. I want this to go forward. I don't think it's ready to go forward. That's the only issue that I have.
Jim, how would you kind of draw a circle around the issues? I suggested the one was the park. Are there other issues that you think need to be?
I think it's the list that Ben has.
I think specifically it's the park. I do think we were counselled to just review very quickly the EAW issue, even though we did do the AUAR. We probably should just review that just to make sure we are in compliance with that. I understand the issue with the side houses. I am not opposed to the side-facing houses, to be quite honest, but I guess I'd like to know, what kind of cost are we talking about ripping up the road and that? Or is there any other option for that particular piece at all? To Jim's point earlier, you know, if you go diagonal on the house, I don't even know that that's an option. I do want to make a correction very clearly, that as you look at these two concepts, that the original concept actually had 53 houses in this upper right-hand corner, if you will, and you now have 54. So we're not talking a difference of 43. Yeah, it's just really, it's just, again, they've pushed it up into this weird little angle, but number of houses are still...
The number of houses are the same, but what I saw is, what Cara voiced, is that there's an extra feeder there. There's an extra street.
Yeah, that's gone now.
Yeah.
And so in some ways, we've actually preserved more land than we did originally. So again, I just, I know the numbers thrown around earlier were 43 versus 53 homes, and I just want to make sure there's an understanding that realistically, as you look at the two in that area, it's actually just one-house difference. And things are laid out differently, yes, but that's the big piece right there. And that your additional houses, five houses, are because of that piece that you added on down at the bottom, left-hand corner, very bottom, that did not exist before. So, in some ways, again, more, it's actually more quiet for some of these areas because you don't have that huge thoroughfare, not to mention the issue you would have of even building it in the first place. But again, I think if I heard clearly, it was park, EAW, side houses. Those were the three ones I wrote down as the biggest components.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask?
Go, go ahead.
Questions? Well, I, I think, you know, the park, the stuff that we've been talking about are issues, but I think there's a bigger issue here. And I think it's the same thing that I've been talking about for the last two and a half years that I've been on the council, is what do we want Victoria to look like? And, you know, here we are, we have the opportunity to make a really nice neighborhood. You know, when you drive into Edina, you know you're in Edina. When you drive into Minnetoka in some areas, you know you're in Minnetoka. And I feel that with these developments that we've been approving, rubber stamping, that it's turning into a shock-up-y or, you know, something like that, that's, it's just not, not what I moved out to Victoria for. And, you know, big lots, big houses, you know, preserve what Victoria is. If I wanted to live in Minneapolis, and I've said this many times, then I'd move to Minneapolis. If I wanted to live in Richfield where I grew up, that's where I'd go. I want to make sure that, you know, we're keeping Victoria Victoria. And I feel that, you know, changing the house style, and I understand the market and, you know, more dense is popular, but I don't think it's popular. There's no way that I'd want to be more dense than I already am. So I guess my question for Lennar is where your price point's going to be? What are the materials that you're using for the houses? And how do they compare to the older homes?
Price point is, you know, it really should be somewhat irrelevant to this conversation.
No, it shouldn't, because it affects value.
Well, it's...
And we have to deal with it. And the residents who pay taxes have to deal with it.
Well, let me understand correctly what determines the value of a home. Because whenever I've had an appraisal done, they look at value of similar homes, not the 2,600-square-foot home that's built five blocks or however far down. And we have that in our neighborhood, Joe. We have the smaller homes, not far from our big homes.
And let me remind you...
But I've never been valued against...
And let me remind you that our neighborhood is not...
I've never been valued against those homes when I've had an appraisal done on my home. So unless something's changing in the marketplace from that perspective, I mean, again, I think that's an interesting piece. I also think we're not selling half-million-dollar homes anymore in this area. I could be wrong, but I think that's where the struggle is, is that those of us who have those homes, I don't think mine's that much, but in that arena, aren't selling because demand.
And that's where I look to the builder as the expert in the industry to determine what is appropriate.
And to answer the rest of your comment or your question there, what I can tell you is what our recent sales activity has been in Lake Town 8th, which would be a transition of this similar product. The average base sales price is about $415 to $445. And you continue to add another $45 to $75,000 in options on top of that. That'll give you a general feel for where it's at. The materials are very similar, stone and brick. Stone is probably more popular these days. You don't see a lot of brick on homes, but they are, what we use is Louisiana Pacific or LP siding. It's a hard, not hard cement, but it's a hard wood fiber siding. It's got a 50-year warranty on it. So the siding, the materials, the shingles are architectural-grade shingles. Everything is the same. The reality is, as Councilmember Beza, I apologize if I butchered your name, said, is the market has changed. You know, we would be out here selling homes for a million dollars if we thought we could. And there's very nice home sites through this phase, too, that are going to attract their own sets of premiums on top of the numbers and the things that I stated. So, we feel that we are doing a very good job of presenting something that has the ability to be successful, meets and integrates the same materials as what's already there. Yes, the styles and the square footages are a little bit different, we'll admit that, but they're very comparable to, we still put a lot of, there's still a lot of architectural detail on the exterior of the home with gables, dormers, pillars, porches. All that stuff is still incorporated into the home. We're not, you know, we're not building a cookie-cutter square box.
Do your, do the windows inside, do they have trim around them or are they...
They have LP or vinyl trim. There are six-inch trim around them.
On the inside of the house? So it's trimmed out?
Uh, to be honest, I pay more attention to the outside.
Because all that stuff does affect value.
Sure.
And, you know, the other thing, too, is with our side yard setbacks, again, we're going smaller and smaller. And, you know, in my opinion, we should be going bigger and trying to make, you know, a more executive-style, I guess, neighborhood. I mean, more space.
That's not selling today, and there is no difference in the side yard setbacks in this neighborhood versus the last neighborhood that we approved for Lennar versus other builders in the city. I personally don't see the side yard setback as an issue at this point. I look at that more as a truth of today's marketplace.
Joe, I know you feel strongly about this issue, but I reject the notion that you said we've rubber stamped.
Thank you. I reject it.
Try telling Ben, in five months' worth of work, six or seven public meetings, or any of us, that we've rubber stamped this. That's nonsense. I know, I'm giving you a chance to reject that. I also think it's unfortunate that some of the terminology that's been used, and again, I respect the passion and the feeling and the commitment of the people who have spoken. Eyesore, clear-cutting, bringing up, they don't understand where the neighborhood's going, bringing up the lawsuit. I'll remind you all, we just had a survey done, a national survey done, and upwards of 60-plus percent, 95% of people who responded, oh, Victoria's a great place to live. It is a great place to live, and it doesn't serve anybody, I don't think, well, to be downplaying it. Eyesore? You can disagree with what's being built here, both the style and the size, but eyesore? That doesn't, that doesn't advance the argument at all. Enough said. I mean...
May I make one comment, Mayor?
Please.
Counsel, about this value question, which obviously has been discussed at some length tonight. I guess I understand the value question, the way we've talked about it tonight, to be, will this phase of development and the nature of the development have a depressing effect on the value of other existing development around this phase of development? I think that's the way I understand the value issue to have been raised. I don't hear the Lennar representatives, I think to their credit, denying that the city can look at that. I don't hear them saying, that's not something you can consider. What I hear them saying is, they don't believe in their judgment that this proposed development will have that impact, that they are proposing a phase of development that in their judgment will not have a depressing effect on other phases of development around them. That is obviously a debatable point. I mean, clearly, folks can have differences of opinion about that. There are experts, as you well know, that evaluate those kind of questions. I'm not one of them, but there are people... one of them, but there are people that evaluate that kind of an issue. I just want to be clear about what I understand, where the debate to be joined right now on this point. I don't think Lennar is saying you can't consider it. I think they're simply responding that in their judgment, this is not going to have that impact that you're hearing from some folks in your community that it will have.
Well, I, again, for what it's worth, I'll step out on a limb. I do think many of the things that have been discussed are a matter of preference. And I can respect and understand how you would have, some would have a different opinion, but the side yard or the, the, the street-facing four homes doesn't seem to me like the, the end of the world. But again, I, I respect others' opinions, but we, we're the ones who have to vote.
I have a few more questions, Mr. Mayor.
Fire.
You know, we had met with the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District about trying to improve Lake Wasserman water quality. And so I was curious, what, how are we addressing any of those issues with this development? Or have we?
So I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question. I recall from memory and discussion that the number-one issue with the Lake Wasserman water quality is the agricultural farm on the other side of the lake.
Which is unregulated.
And I, again, I'll ask my question. What have we done with the stuff that we can control? Are we doing anything to address that when we have the opportunity?
What I look at...
I guess I'll ask the question to Kara again. What are we doing?
So I guess I'll just first note that throughout the process, the Watershed District has been involved early on in the development review. So Lennar contacted them early on in the process to let them know that this phase was happening again. So jointly, we've had a number of meetings with them related to that topic. So certainly, they're meeting the requirements. They're proposed to meet the requirements of the Watershed District. But the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District is really looking at the opportunity for us, through this process, we will have control over a significant piece of property. And there's a lot of pollutant loading coming into Lake Wasserman through those wetlands. So one of the areas that they're thinking about, whether there's a potential project there, is once we have jurisdiction over these wetlands, would they be looking at potentially doing a project in there to address specific pollutant loading that's coming off the site? Overall, the problems with Lake Wasserman have more to do with pre-existing conditions from agriculture activities. There's a ton of in-Lake load in Wasserman, and CARP are creating a problem. So the Watershed District is focused on coming up with a systemic solution to the Six Mile area so that they aren't spending money on a little project here that isn't actually going to address the water quality. So the CARP management piece is the first piece of that process, and they've been hosting meetings with property owners in the area to review that. So that, that all remains ongoing, and we continue to discuss it with them regularly.
Thank you.
When I look at this, you know, kind of comparing the 2003, I think it is, versus the current proposal, and I look at lots fifty-four through fifty-seven, which is a bit of an island, and those are gone. That's the closest ones to the wetland and the lake directly. And then twenty through twenty-six, those are gone, or at least twenty-one through twenty-six, which again, kind of cuts through the middle, and as I understand, it was in deference to the wetland, and certainly is advantageous to the eight houses on the, I guess, what would that be, the east end or the south end of, of Carriage where it meets Red Fox, so that, that street doesn't go in between, behind, you know, as close behind their house. And the disconnection between those two cul-de-sacs and the current configuration, again, as I understand it, was done because of the wetlands and the grading and the soils in that area. So, you know, if you compare what was versus what is proposed today, to me, it seems far more, I guess, sensitive to the wetlands in the area. The, the one negative, or the, the counterbalance that is slightly smaller lot sizes, but even at that, the additional five building sites aren't really within the original plat proposal. They're in that additional land that was purchased, as I understand it. And so net-net, it's about the same, but the lots are a little smaller to make more room for wetlands. This is about what it looks like to me. I don't know if that's a fair assessment, but that's my, that's what I get from the, from the drawings.
And is that a fair assessment?
It's a fair statement. I would also note, if I hadn't kind of garbled up these concepts with numbers, one of the things you'd see, probably a little bit easier in comparing the two concepts, the smaller lots were always proposed in this...
In that area.
...area. These are smaller. If I remove these numbers, you would see that these are larger than these lots here. Basically, what they've done is they've wrapped them in. So they're still not adjacent to the existing lots, but they are incorporating slightly smaller lots. And we're talking ten-foot of frontage primarily.
And Ben, I guess, I just want to address the point, if I can, about, you know, staying away from wetlands. And I understand that, but the, there is a cost to draining and filling a wetland. And, you know, so when we, you know, give whoever's developing credit that they're not draining the wetlands, well, it costs a lot of money. And to go through the state process and the Corps of Engineers, and then to buy wetland credits to do it, I mean, it makes financial sense for them. So I understand, and I'm a full believer to stay out of wetlands and protect water quality and wildlife, but there's a financial incentive there for the developer to do that. And, you know, I don't really give any kudos to doing that.
I guess I was responding to the question of, what have we done?
Regardless of innovation... I understand your point. The only thing I'd tell you, because we've been in the room twice with Lennar and other water jurisdictions, we called that five, and just to talk about the crossing that we want to go in for Lakeside Drive being highly complex, and multiple entities telling us, I mean, we shrunk the road down from twenty-eight feet to twenty-six feet. We took the boulevard between the trail and the road out, so we really shrunk down our requirements to help Lennar achieve what we were asking them to do. Seeing those other streets go in is not necessarily just a cost savings to the developer. I don't know that any of those other entities would approve a permit through their processes just because we wanted a local connection through there.
How do we proceed?
Well, we need to know if you're going to table that indicates that you'd like something to be addressed before it comes back. I know we've talked about the park. A lot of it may, maybe has to do with the playground location. That seems to be much more of a staff item than a preliminary plat item. Lennar's not going to decide where the playground goes. They haven't been in the whole process.
No, that's us.
But if there's something related to park dedication that you want to see, that we need to explore something, that information would be useful so that Lennar understands what the council's looking for, and it would help give staff direction as to where do we start. We feel like we've kind of exhausted most of our options for obtaining additional parkland area that's usable and useful. I noted before, if the playground item being kind of a staff thing to, to work on, work with the park committee again, we have other areas within the land being dedicated that we can be successful in achieving a lot of the concerns that were brought out tonight and have been since we brought on that topic. But the, if the park is an item that you want to be addressed, I'd be just curious to know, what about the dedication do you want to see done?
So, go ahead. I don't think it's a dedication issue in my mind from Lennar. I think it's an issue of having a discussion with District 112 to see what flexibility there is on this. Based upon their response, we might want to come back to Lennar with other ideas. I don't know. My preference would be to not do that, because you've done a great job of, of trying to meet the dedication so far. But we need to figure out where the park's going to go, and there's a legal agreement in place with the district that has...
You comfortable that could be a staff item?
I think that, for the most part, it is a staff item, because Lennar is certainly not going to talk to the school district about our agreement.
How about Lonnie?
Lennar, can I just say?
Go ahead.
Would you be comfortable with the condition of preliminary plat approval, that we come to an agreement before final plat on the playground location?
If, if it comes with the caveat that everyone understands that our dedication requirements are being met, and that we're not being asked to go over and above what those are, I think we would be comfortable with that, yes.
About Lonnie raised the question about updating the EAW, the A U A R that was done in '03, as I understand it. And is that, was that, is that a hurdle we have missed, or is it something we need to address?
I, I'm not concerned about it. All might have something to add.
We could leave that as a staff item.
You could certainly make confirmation of that fact, the condition of...
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's the issue, because I heard clearly, we probably have it covered, but let's make sure that we do meet the requirement.
The only one that went in my mind that, that remains an issue is the side-facing of the four lots.
Correct.
And my, is anything, do we need more work done on that between Lennar and staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have evaluated that. We've sent, you know, potential plan revision possibilities of how that could look to staff. And I think between ourselves and, and also input about the condition of the road or the longevity of how the road holds up in the long term, if you have to tear it open, we felt that the best decision or the best way to address that was to leave it with the side load and to include or incorporate additional buffer landscaping, which we would be happy to do. And, you know, we're, we're willing to do what we can there. And, and, you know, maybe to Councilmember Crowley's comment, what we would also be willing to do is commit to sliding the homes as far off of that right of way as possible. Is that going to pick up a ton of extra space? No, but, you know, we would place them as far to the south as we could. Turning them, it might help the view from Carriage, but I think it would detriment the homes that are going in too much.
See, that's where I have a, a challenge. And can you pull up the GIS real quick?
Yeah.
And I get it, it has to do with lot sizes and stuff like that, but, I mean, just go up the street in Deer Run, and you'll see an example. And I'm not suggesting this is possible. I'm suggesting that here is something that's where it's been done.
Sorry, one second. It would, of course, not be cooperative in that.
So, Edgewater and Wedgmere. Yep, right there. That corner, right there. Right there. So it's a much bigger lot, I get it. But that orientation actually is very pleasing and to the eye when you drive into that. I'm just trying to, I'm not suggesting you go make a change. What I'm suggesting is what alternatives can we look at, can be considered? Right now, all I've heard is, it's this, and that's it. And there are options. What are the options, and what are the costs?
You know, for, just to be clear, while they're looking that up, at the GIS map you have on the, on my street, Hidden Pond, that corner lot faces the, it faces Hidden Pond. It doesn't face Edgewater. And I, to be honest, this is the first time it's ever occurred to me. Shame on me.
Well, just go up the street here to where Wedgmere crosses on itself, and you've got the lot, the house on the corner, just a little bit to your left there. That left, yep. The one kind of sits angled on the corner. Across the street from it faces the side street, not the, not there.
Now go down to the expedition.
And by the way, just as a, as a point of comparison, since these neighborhoods are adjacent to each other, but half or better of the houses in Deer Run are Ramblers.
Scroll down to the, right there, corner of Hackamore and Red Oak. That house has what I'll call a Main Street orientation. Excuse me. It's oriented, as we're considering an alternative, in that the front of the house faces Hackamore, and the rear house faces the other house on Red Oak. So why is that, why is it okay to do it there and not somewhere else? To have the orientation. They're not aligned the same going around that corner. It's different for the house across the street.
Are you looking at the one with the cursor on it?
Yeah, so the one with the cursor faces Hackamore. It's one directly west, faces Red Oak. They're oriented completely different. You've done that in your own neighborhood.
Well, I, if, again, it, two, two things, what I would say is that the two flanking on the outside place Carriage, which would be that. Yeah, so those two on the outsides are, are going to face in.
Facing Carriage, yeah.
It's the, the four interior ones that...
Well, and you could also say it's only three, because you have this corner lot that's proposed to face the extension of Alphon would be across from this house, also faces Alphon and not Carriage. So you'd really have this lot here and these two.
And, you know, maybe a possibility would be, if you're comfortable with this, that we would be willing to work with staff to position the house in a way within the lot that maybe reduces the visual impact to Carriage Drive. It becomes a little bit of a loose definition, but, you know, we would certainly look at turning or, or doing something to, to shift the house a little bit, but it kind of depends on what house goes there, too. If it was a, you know, perhaps like a four-car garage house that takes up a lot of a space of it, it would be difficult to, to have a lot of wiggle room on that. So in that particular instance, it would probably be squared up more. But in a case of, if it were a smaller house, we could do that a little bit more and have some flexibility to, to shift that, and that, we would be comfortable with that, for sure.
How much, how many lots would you lose if you pushed them back far enough to put a, a small berm between the road and the, and the side, and then landscaping on the berm? And I'm thinking, you know, five, six, eight feet high, something like that.
Well, that, when you're at, on Carriage, the grade pretty much immediately starts dropping sort of down north to south. So it would, a five-foot berm, they have to be a minimum of thirty-three percent. So for every one foot up, you're going, three feet out, five feet would take up forty-five feet. So we would probably lose three of them across the front there.
What I said earlier is that I would hope that you would be a good corporate citizen and listen, and what I'm hearing is you listening, and I thank you for that very much.
On the plan that is shown to even Lot One there, sort of is shown with a little bit of a, an angle. It's not completely squared up.
So Mayor, I'm going to point of order. It's getting late. Where are we going with this?
Well, I, just to get the conversation started, I'd be comfortable making a motion to approve the preliminary plat, subject to the direction that Lennar work out, the, with staff, verify the EAW is effective, determine the proper park location, and then, from my mind, period. How do people feel about that? Then I'll make a motion.
I would like to include the orientation of the homes.
The orientation of the homes.
Can we dictate that?
What?
I'm not suggesting we dictate what the orientation is. I'm suggesting that they work with the homeowners and see if that's acceptable.
We had to give, I thought we had to give specific direction to...
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and Council, I think we just need to have a, a bar set that everyone can see where it is, and they can jump over it or not. That is the key. If the orientation provision is that it will... Um, that is the key. Um, if the orientation provision is that it will satisfy other human beings that may or may not be in the room, that's a little bit hard to comply with that. I think it's gotta be a standard that you set and enforce, not other people.
Okay, so we'll, we'll become architects.
And I'll get it wrong.
Well, that's, let me for the record, that's gonna, my mo, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve the resolution for the, my computer just ran out of juice on.
With the conditions listed and additions, correct?
And, and the conditions are the park location and verify the, the E A W. Period.
Prior to final plat?
Prior to final plat. That, that's my motion, is there a second?
I'll second from the standpoint, I only wanna get to the debate.
So noted. Further discussion?
Um, my inclination is to say no. It's the position of the houses and I get it that, that there isn't a code issue here and we can't dictate that. So how do we do this in such a way that we encourage them to continue to work with the homeowners to come up with a satisfactory solution? And I recognize that a satisfactory solution, nobody, there's, everybody is, we're not gonna please everyone. But going forward with as it is right now, I'm hearing their alternatives and they're willing to explore alternatives, let's go find them.
Lennar is willing to explore alternatives.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, and I agree. Who gets to make the final decision?
I guess the question is if it comes back and we explored and we didn't find anything.
That is a possibility.
So your condition would be to prior or upon considering final plat, you want to have options for, based on whatever the lot configuration is, how the lot, how the homes on those lots could be laid out?
What the costs are, yeah.
Well, who would, if we?
And how would they get, how would it get paid for?
That's, that's a question I had because I think I heard in an earlier discussion that not only did at some point the city give approval to these orientations to the point where the developer made the investment in putting utilities in to service them the way they're set, and then that the roads, we, our warranty is voided if we dig up the roads to, to change that. And whatever other costs due to reduced road life, I mean, is that correct?
So the, whenever we build infrastructure, we try to put it in the right place so that things don't need to get disrupted a second time. With our street section, the second we disrupt it, we immediately reduce its life, period. Do we disrupt it sometimes? Yes, certainly. Sometimes you have to. Excel Energy likes to disrupt our street. They have a faulted line up in our brand new streets up in Bay Cliff. I can't very well tell them they can't fix their line under the road. Um, in the case of this development, so infrastructure was already constructed such that sewer and water lines are stubbed in here and here. So these lots are getting services, sewer and water services off of the new streets. If they were to flip these lots to be forward facing, just these corner lots, that isn't a big deal because they can still be served off these new services from the side. What becomes a big deal is if they're gonna add more lots, because once they're turned, if they're gonna now put two more lots in here and one more lot in here, these three new homes need services. So they'll have to go out and excavate, they'll have to close carriage drive, excavate eight feet down, tap a new s- water service line, tap a new sanitary sewer service line.
Why do we have to add more lots? Why can't we just add a home with that? A desired solution?
If the lot sizes and shapes stay the same as they are, they can't meet setbacks with the larger homes that we've wanted. So they'd have to reorient those lots themselves. So to Lennar's standpoint, I'm sorry, I don't wanna speak for Paul or Joe, but if you're gonna reconfigure the lot size to say this is now longer from carriage drive south and this one also gets reoriented, you're losing portions of currently planned lots. So you would try to make up and have, this frontage would allow you to put four ninety-foot frontage lots along there. Then you end up with the two lots in the middle that need to be served.
So it's, it's, it's these details, Ben, that I think that are important that we haven't gotten into the detail yet. And if we do it now, it's gonna go to midnight.
And we got more to go. Would you be comfortable making, make that a, a third condition to work with on alternatives, positioning of the, the houses on the lot?
And the outcome may very well be the same. I just don't understand what the options are.
Okay.
If it's even possible and what the ramifications are of those options.
Can we, Mr. Attorney, can we approve that? And that, my motion?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, my sole, uh, objective here is not to have a condition that allows other people, give them veto power. It's gotta be a council call.
Well, I'm fine with having a council call and it's up to the council to engage the community to understand what their preferences are. But right now, even, even if we do that, I don't understand the alternatives till you even ask the questions.
I'll amend the motion to include that third condition that council will, will look at and review and decide, make a final decision on alternatives proposed by staff and Lennar. Any further discussion?
Question, um, if we put in landscaping, how are we guaranteed that that landscaping's gonna stay in?
It would be a condition of approval, so.
Okay, so.
By us, we're, we're basically saying, you know, prior to developing, we had X amount of trees because some of this is coming out of their replacement caliper inches. So if homeowners come in and they say, I don't like trees, I'm not, I didn't agree that I was gonna have that. They take them down, they get a letter from us saying this tree was required for your property, they put it back in.
So that's the guarantee that the neighbors to the north, that the trees and whatever's put in will be there?
Right, and we would clarify certainly on our letter of awareness that certain lots have these conditions in place.
Who maintains those?
It would be the, the homeowners. The homeowners, if they're on the individual lot, if they're in the boulevard, that would also fall on some arrangement that we haven't finalized yet, whether it's the H O A or the individual homeowners.
Okay.
The current Lake Town Association, their covenants set out that any boulevard trees are the responsibility of the jointing property owner. So it's not different than the current condition.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Let me just rephrase it to make sure we got it. We're gonna approve, the motion is to approve the conditional, the preliminary plat, I'm getting confused.
And conditional use permit.
And conditional use permit, subject to the, be prior to the staff and Lennar working through alternatives for the, the location of the park, the, the cost or the appropriateness of the E A W that was done in oh three, I guess oh three, and the cost and, and the alternative citing of, of homes on those four lots. Council to make final decision. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Residents, you know, please, understand, I mean, I'm sure some of you are disappointed that we're, we're taking this step and probably really irritated, but, um, please believe, we're residents here too and we want the best for the city. We disagree, I think, on, on some significant issues and that's unfortunate, but, um, we really had, do have the best interests of the city at heart. Having said that, let's move on.
Mayor?
We gotta approve the.
If I may, just procedural issue, I think on the rezoning, you have the.
You got it, great, sorry.
Mike, go to resolution fifteen thirty-four. When we approve the zoning, we have to approve the publishing of the, the, the ordinance. And that takes a four fifths vote. So I'll make a motion to approve resolution fifteen thirty-four, which says.
Oh, approving the summary publication of the ordinance.
A summary publication.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We've approved the resolution, the publishing of the resolution. Now, we've done all of that, we need to do on those two issues. You're okay?
Yes, sorry, just clarifying with Joe whether you abstained or you voted no.
He, I, he voted no, right?
No, I just didn't vote.
Oh, okay, abstaining. So the vote is four to zero with one extension.
For the resolution.
For the resolution.
The summary publication.
Yep.
And that wasn't on purpose, that's fine.
No, not for the summary publica, what, did you?
Sorry, did you intend to vote or not to vote?
I, I just wanted to clarify something, but we had four votes, we're fine.
For the publication of the summary resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what we were doing, but I just didn't vote and it's fine.
And the approval of the, of the, of the preliminary plat, that you voted against that?
Correct.
So that was four to one, the other vote was four, four to zero with the abstention.
I guess, I guess if your abstention wasn't intentional, I would prefer that there be a actual purposeful vote. I don't, can't force you to vote, but if it was just an oversight, I'd rather get the record corrected to whatever your position is.
I mean, it doesn't really matter at this point. I mean, it's fine.
All right, moving along, new business?
I know we have a lot to get through, can I suggest a five minute break, a three minute break maybe?
How much more do we have to go?
We have three items left.
Let's get it done.
Okay.
Garbage collection program?
Jenny will give us a quick overview on the packet that we've discussed previously. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to do was not to mandate organized garbage collection, but to make it easier for homeowners to choose to organize to do that. Um, it's not a really hard process, but if it's something you've never been through before, it might be a little bit daunting. And Jenny's put together a packet that's now available on our website that can help walk interested groups through that.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we've talked about this in the past about how we didn't, we didn't wanna limit the amount of garbage haulers that we allow in the city, but there's a concern about multiple garbage trucks in residential streets, um, on a daily basis. So, um, a lot of cities are, um, you know, putting together packets for, um, neighborhoods to organize garbage collection. Um, and since, you know, we put together R F Ps, you know, we go through this process on a lot of different things. Um, I put together a packet for, um, neighborhoods if they wish to try and organize, um, a garbage collection program. Literally every, um, aspect of it, just, uh, information on potentials of, you know, some of the benefits that it could do for the neighborhood, um, a survey to, uh, survey the neighborhood, uh, to see if they'd be interested. Um, and every, you know, document possible, um, in a Word document so they can go in and mo- modify and, uh, you know, draft it to, you know, how they'd like it for their neighborhood. Um, so it's easy to download, all the information is on the website, um, and literally they can, uh, use every document, um, the proposal and, uh, uh, go out and get R F Ps from garbage haulers. And it is completely optional, it is not, uh.
Say that again, there is nothing mandated here.
There is nothing mandated here. It is if the neighborhood wants to start an organized, uh, garbage collection program. Uh, nobody, no neighborhood is required to do that and nobody within the neighborhood is required to participate. This is just a packet of information. If somebody wants to spearhead the program in the neighborhood, this is just something to help them do that so they don't have to go through this whole process trying to figure out how to do that themselves. Um, every document, um, again, is in here to help them and they can modify it, uh, you know, to meet their requirements.
Just by way of background, at a recent Deer Run Homeowners Association meeting that I attended, there was overwhelming support and disgust with the number of, disgust with the number of haulers who traverse the neighborhood on a, on a daily basis and overwhelming desire to do something to consolidate, to reduce the traffic, reduce the noise, reduce the wear and tear on the roads, but nothing to be mandated. The, the city, we're, according to what the, the, the policy that Jenny's talking about, we would not mandate anything. We would encourage, we would pers- try to persuade, um, but at the end of the day, if the neighborhood is comfortable with seven haulers, they get seven haulers.
That is correct.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just commented that Lake Bridge has a single hauler and it's a great thing. So I'd, I'd encourage the other neighborhoods to do the same thing if they're missing out or if they're not doing it.
We may call on neighborhoods, neighborhoods that have been successful at this to kinda lobby on our behalf because it's amazing to me, having said how, glowingly how the neighbors are rising up in arms to eliminate haulers, how many individuals I've talked to who've fallen in love with their trash hauler. Seems a misplaced identity, but, okay, so that's.
I want one as long as it's mine.
I want one as long as it's mine. So this was, the point of this was just to inform?
Just, this is just to inform, um, everybody, um, I will put information out there. Again, it's already on our website. Um, well, when we do, um, you know, different meetings, um, you know, also through our newsletter, we'll put this information out there. Again, this is just to help residents through the process. If they wish to do it, there are definitely some benefits um, to this organized garbage collection. It is optional, but, uh, there are benefits for both, um, residents and, uh, you know, for the city down the road, um, you know, de- decreased, you know, wear and tear on streets and all that, um, so.
Maybe particularly relevant to Deer Run was gonna spend two point eight million dollars if our engineer is correct in resurfacing our streets. Thanks, Jenny.
You're very welcome.
Jenny, this is well put together.
Thank you.
This is, uh, best practice.
Uh, the land trust.
Uh, yes, I'll try to go quickly through this item. The Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has issued an R F P to expand land trust program. So they have some funds that are called CHIP, um, commu- CHIP funds, Community Housing Impact Program. Yeah, the C D A approached staff about whether we would be interested in having the C D A apply or respond to this R F P to gain access to funds to expand the land trust program in Victoria by four or five homes. I know you've had some discussion in the past about the land trust program. Uh, so really briefly, the land trust program separates the land from the actual dwelling, which reduces the sale price of that home by about twenty percent. The, uh, land is leased to the homeowner for a period of ninety-nine years at a time that's renewable. Uh, so from the perspective of the homeowner, not a lot of their daily use of the property changes. Um, there are a few restrictions in terms of the land trust program, takes approval on major additions, renovations, uh, things like that. Um, if we were, if the C D A were to go forward in applying for, or responding to this R F P, if they receive CHIP funds, it's not likely that reducing the value of existing homes within Victoria by twenty percent would make them affordable for the guidelines that are issued. Uh, and so what the C D A would be looking to do would be to partner with the city of Victoria on a down payment assistance program. Uh, as staff, we kinda contemplated and asked some questions about what parameters might be put around that. Just off the cuff envisioning that instead of a grant program, a down payment grant program, that that would be, uh, perhaps a forgivable, low interest, maybe one percent loan that's paid back when the home is refinanced or sold. So it's more of a revolving loan program than a grant program. Uh, the CHIP funds are flexible in that manner that they would accommodate, um, many restrictions that we might imagine. Uh, secondly, we would have the ability to put restrictions around, um, who would receive the down payment assistance. Uh, as I contemplated in the memo, what came to mind was our discussions about really wanting to be able to attract, um, younger families who are at the low end of their wage scale but have high wage potential, wanting them to have a place to locate in Victoria so that they become attached, fall in love it, love with it like so many people have. And then when they get to the point where they've made some progress and maybe paying down their student loan debt, they're getting to the higher end of their wage scale, they're able to move somewhere in Victoria. And because they're already here, that's hopefully a choice that they want to make. Um, the C D A has not responded to the R F P. What they're looking to you all for is whether you would be interested in having them do that. The application or response deadline is June twelfth, so we could talk about this again at the June eighth meeting. But in reality, the C D A needs to understand between now and then whether they should be putting forward, um, an R F P response or not. We have money available for this. Um, I said in the memo about a hundred and fifty thousand, I think it's more like a hundred and eighty thousand. It is restricted to use for, um, some kind of affordable housing. We could go forward with the program like this. Um, we could use those funds possibly towards a different kind of joint project with the C D A or another agency that would be affordable. housing, or we could simply wait and look at what other opportunities might come up.
Laurie, when we, we've talked about this in the past, this is probably several years ago, and at that time, I think we were requiring dedication of lots from homeowners to be applied towards the CDA, and what we found is that we really, given the demographics of our city, we don't have very good alignment with the people that are looking for those types of homes, and it didn't work, I mean, we stopped it.
There was no demand, in fact.
Yeah, it, and so, we ended up buying those lots back, and actually, we ended up selling them back to.
The developers.
The developer, which was theirs, yeah, was theirs in the first place, which, that's not, in my mind, a good practice. I am all for trying to find a way to work with the CDA to come up with a program, is this the best approach, or are there other things out there?
I think this is one approach that's available to us, and unfortunately, the hour is late, and there's not a lot of time to debate, even between now and June 12th, but do we prefer to pursue the homeownership route, which the land trust program approaches, in a moderate amount, four to five homes at a time? Or would we rather save our funds to talk about some rental housing, potential senior project in the future? I can't, I don't have an idea of what the best is, but those are some of the options before us.
So, an idea that came up last time was looking at a group of, I can't even think what you would call them, what are they, townhomes? I don't know, rental town, they're, they're townhomes that were coming up for sale and that we could actually go in and start purchasing those, and then turn them over to the CDA for their use. If we've got the money to do something like that, I think I would be interested in it, but it depends upon the availability of the properties.
One of the challenges that I had when, and I don't know if this is the same program or not, but with the original, several year ago, discussion was that, my understanding was that while the homeowner got a discount when they purchased it, they also then had to sell it at a discount, and for me, the value of this program is in giving the homeowner the ability to build equity. And the way that program was structured, they couldn't ever do it. They have a payment, same as everybody else, but they wouldn't have participated in the appreciation of the property, because then it would have to be sold to the next person at a discounted price to be part of the program. And so, it, it never gave them the leg up that you would, that, that's the point of homeownership in a lot of cases, right? I mean, anybody can make a monthly payment, but what do you get for it at the end of 10 or 20 or 30 years? If you don't have any equity, it, it hasn't accomplished anything, in, in my opinion. I don't know if that's still the case here, but if it is, that would, I would be opposed to something that goes that direction. I also had some questions about, you know, who pays the taxes on the land portion of the property?
Yeah, we did ask about that, and typically, the homeowner is paying the full taxes that reflect both the land and the house value, there isn't a difference between, you know, one neighbor to another, that, that doesn't affect it.
You know, this, this has come up relatively recently, and we're almost having to respond with a gun to our head. I mean, this is not the, the last opportunity that we'll have, I mean, it sounds like there are more questions than.
I, I have more questions, I mean, I would want to know things like.
And it's 10 o'clock.
For, well, right, and, you know, just as an example, and we saw this breakdown not too long ago, I could probably dig it out if I, but how many homes in our city today have assessed values or have market values at 310,000 and under?
Actually, actually, just.
It's like 40%.
I went on Ediner Realty today and just looked on what was, you know, selling for 300 or less, and there is a mix of townhomes and houses, but there's seven.
And that's about what we looked at as well, we did identify four or five neighborhoods that have homes that would potentially be eligible, but certainly, it is subject to what comes up to the market.
I guess my point is if there's homes that are already at that price point, why do you have to do something special to make homes at that price point?
Could you get a nicer home if you have to, if you get a 20% discount?
I guess, when I looked at this, my.
Nicer and nothing is two different questions.
Sure.
I'd like a nicer, I'll go if I can get it for 20%.
No, you're fine.
I, when I looked at this, I, the first thing that came to my mind is I think that we could use this money better if we, you know, focused it on either senior living, where you really can't afford something, or, you know, somebody that actually doesn't have a house, you know, I don't know, the homeless, or, you know, something, and not just changing, you know, going from a $200,000 house to a $300,000 house, but actually making a difference, I guess.
The sense of the group is we'll thank the county for this opportunity, but we'll look for other opportunities down the road.
We want to find an opportunity to work.
Yeah, because we are champions of diversified housing, and this would be a way to diversify, maybe not the best way.
Well, again, I would even just go a step further and say align this with our strategic plan and think about the senior piece more specifically.
Yeah.
We move on? Is Kara still here?
Yeah, I am, I just have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation that I'll have to try to whip through, I think. I guess what I'll start first by saying is that what you're being asked to do tonight is to approve the, receive and accept the feasibility report that was provided to you and order the public hearing. So, this presentation is the same presentation that I'll give at a neighborhood meeting that we would host before the public hearing, and then you'll see it again at the public hearing. So, I'm going to move through it quickly and stop on the things that are meaty to the feasibility study, but feel free to slow me down along the way if you want to hear more. I won't go to the, through the history of the Street Capital Improvement Program unless somebody wants me to tonight. That's what my first couple of slides cover. This specific project that we're contemplating in this feasibility study essentially covers everything left in Deer Run that hasn't been improved or doesn't yet need to be improved. So, these streets were all reclaimed and repaved in 2007. This neighborhood was constructed, this phase of Deer Run was constructed, it was still being accepted when I got here in 2001, so it's newer than the other streets, plus this came in after the city switched our standard to include a sand section. So, this road has the drain tile and the full sand section underneath it, the rest of these streets do not. So, they were built before we had that requirement, so there's fabric, nine inches of class five and three and a half inches of asphalt roughly off the top of my head, and no drain tile. So, that's the difference between these streets and some of the older ones, or the newer ones. These are just some photos from today, in fact, showing you what the existing conditions look like on the street, if you haven't had a chance to drive out there. We're seeing a lot of indications of subgrade failure and a lot of need to fill potholes. Public Works is getting out there pretty frequently to address potholes that currently exist. We also take a look at how drainage is functioning specifically, so this neighborhood does have concrete curb and gutter in place throughout, which is a good thing for moving water, but over time, you'll start to see some changes in elevation related to drainage. So, this picture isn't fabulous, but this is an area where we actually have the roads settled a lot around this corner, so the water isn't getting into the catch basin, but then the road is also heaved, there's a big hump if you drive it as a result of the storms who are pushing up into the road section. So, as part of the project, we take a look at each of these structures to see if anything needs to be done at them, done to them, as well as taking a look at the curb and gutter. We'll do spot replacement of curb and gutter, not for aesthetic purposes, just for the purposes of replacing areas that are currently causing water to pond. So, that ends up being a little bizarre, because you'll end up with like pretty white curb next to aged curb, sometimes I get questions about that, but it would cost a fortune to replace all the curb and gutter, and it's functionally working. So, we just, things that where it's cracked and water is potentially standing, we replace that as part of the project. Here's some background information that's also in the report about the widths of street and the ages of them. So, all of these streets were, again, constructed before we had our new section requirements. So, what we found is in roads that don't have the drain tile to carry the sump pump drainage away from the street and don't have the sand section, we're seeing failure of the road similar to a subgrade failure. So, these roads don't just need a little milling overlay on them, the section underneath the pavement isn't functioning anymore. So, before the road gets so bad that we have to do a complete reconstruction, where we go in and we put in a whole new sand section, we've tried this alternative method, which is really just reusing the base material that's there to create a new, stronger base, and then use that as an opportunity to install the drain tile, so we have somewhere for the water to go. So, the existing pavement would be, so here's your road, you've got a road bed, you have subgrade underneath it, you have a base, and you have a botuminous surface. So, what we would be doing would be a, particular machine would be coming in and grinding up the botuminous surface and base to create a new surface. Some of that new surface would be removed, because you can't have the road get any higher than what's there. This material would then be stabilized, and a new surface would be placed on the top of it, but in addition, we would be installing this drain tile. So, drain tile goes down below the subgrade, so water that gets into the subgrade has somewhere to go, instead of just getting trapped there and moving every time we freeze and thaw. In addition, drain tile service connections would be stubbed underneath the curb to each lot, so everybody would have the opportunity to tie their sump pump into the storm sewer system. Right now, if you go down any of our streets that don't have the drain tile and you see people's sump pump hoses running right up to the street, you will find the road failing in that precise area, because the water just constantly saturates the area, and then pop goes the pavement as part of that process. I just said pop goes the pavement, must be late.
You can sing that.
I will note that the feasibility study is really just dealing, dealing with the street and drainage improvements, because that's the portion of the costs that are assessed, but when we go through design, we would be taking a look at the sanitary sewer system and water system, and if we had to do any repairs, that obviously would happen before we put this new surface over the top of the road. Project financing, under the city's assessment policy, 50% of the street and storm sewer costs are assessed to the property owners. These are the total project costs for this project. So, remember, we decided to, from a feasibility study, take a look at the whole neighborhood at once, instead of splitting it into pieces. There's 254 benefiting properties in the neighborhood, and that results in a unit assessment of $5,400 per unit. This map is also in blown-up view in the feasibility study, but it starts to show what the assessable properties are. The land in blue is either city property or Deer Run Golf Course property. Those parcels are assessed just the same as if they were residential properties. So, here's a city park, we're going to get assessed for that city park as if there were lots there. For the golf course, we had to go through a similar process of, like we did for the 78th Street and Coachia project, if there were to be lots along this road, how many units would there be consistent with what the other units are in the neighborhood? We made the decision to treat those additional units as single-family lots versus treating them as twins, because that would drive the density up quite a bit for the golf course. The end result, though, is that the golf course has 44 units.
Has anybody talked to town?
Not yet. That, of course, will be the next stop within the next week. That math amounts to a $237,000 assessment to the golf course. So, that is. They were assessed when we did Woodstone on the same basis, obviously, it was less units, so the financial impact probably wasn't as significant, but obviously, our next step, I wouldn't wait till the neighborhood meeting and the public hearing to meet with them, I'd be setting up a meeting, preferably call tomorrow and set up a meeting in the next week, so as they hear about this information, they know we're already meeting to talk about it.
You do it with Tom, right? Matt Berry.
Yeah, correct. That's, I would describe that as probably the biggest complication of what is a relatively pretty straightforward project, at $5,400 a unit. I certainly don't want to speak for the neighbors when I haven't met with any of them, but the couple I've crossed paths with are excited at the prospect of us getting in there and doing a street project, and they understand that they're going to be assessed for it.
Do you recall what it was for the Woodstone side?
It was just under five, probably, and that was eight years ago, so.
Consistent.
Yeah. That's just saying the same thing again, the assessment is levied over a 15-year period, so for 5,400, that works out to about $556 per year, assuming we had a 6% interest rate on the assessment, that would depend on how we were financing the project and how we're, what our bonds are coming in at. I'm not going to go through the deferment of special assessment policy, because that can be covered at the next meeting. The biggest thing I want to talk about then, aside from that, is I have a proposed schedule in the feasibility study. Beyond these two dates, I, I'm not entirely confident about what I'm going to recommend for a project schedule. So, we'd have the resident meeting on the 15th, we'd hold the public hearing on the 22nd, we would move into design. I really want to work with some contractors, because with the volume of work that's involved here, it maybe does make sense to split it over two construction seasons, since it's such a large dollar amount, or does it make sense to delay bidding until February and do it all in 2016? I want some feedback from contractors on that. Simultaneously, if you recall, the other reason why we wanted this feasibility study done was so that we had actual costs, so that Kelly and the finance committee can take a look at. Because originally, we were doing like $3 million in 2015 and $2 million in 2016, and now we're, depending on what happens with 78th and Coachia, we're starting to look at whether do we do one bond issue for all of these projects over two years, what's the pros and cons of that, what's the tax implication, all of that thing. Kelly needs time to run that analysis and take a look at that before we would actually get to the point of bidding the project. So, I would see those steps happening, starting now into the design phase, and then I would come back with what I would recommend as a project schedule for when to bid it and when to have the construction completed by. That's a little unique, typically, I know that when I'm sitting here, but since it's already June, I want to work through that a little bit more with some contractors before I make a final recommendation. That's my super, super fast presentation, so feel free to ask me any questions.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-36, a resolution receiving and accepting the feasibility report and calling for a hearing on improvements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we've approved the report, reports of the city manager.
We were planning to do an Ewingston-Cobler schedule update and a water storage facility update, but I would defer to you if you want to hear those at the next meeting.
I would defer to the next meeting, anybody object?
I'll second that.
Bob, thank you for your help tonight, you have any further comments?
Mayor, I have a brief PowerPoint I'd like to show, but I'm going to skip it, I think. Thank you.
Reports of any of the council members?
I just have a quick thing for anybody watching on TV that's not aware of it. Victoria's Spirit, if you haven't seen it yet, has fabulous information in it, including the aforementioned Highway 5 construction and some great calendars, which is up on my fridge at home, so just FYI.
With that, take a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned. I would like to compliment staff tonight for their work.
Very well done.